The late delay, I've had a personal issue to deal with. I've got my phone on, so apologies if it goes off, I will have to take a call at least. So I do apologise and apologise for everybody in the public gallery for the late start. It's just something I couldn't avoid. Welcome and thank you for attending and welcome to this meeting of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. My name's councillor Terry Fox, I'm the leader of the council and I'm chair of this committee. The meeting is open to the public, however, Appendix C on item 14 of the agenda is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information. As always, if members wish to discuss the information in the appendix of item 14, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part. We have received 13 questions from eight members of the public by the deadline and we will deal with these at item six. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipments are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting and I do apologise if mine does go off. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is in Chuda Square. I'll just ask each member of the policy committee to introduce themselves and ask officers to introduce themselves and then presenting officers if they can introduce themselves as well. Can start with you, Richard.
Thank you Chair. I'm Richard Williams, I represent the Stanington Ward and I am Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee.
Hi, my name's Martin Smith, I'm councillor for Dorantotley Ward, I'm Chair of the Economic Development and Skills Committee.
Good afternoon, my name's Shafak Mohamed, I'm councillor for Ecclesall Ward and leader of the Lib Dem group.
Shalat, sorry, my name's Shafak Mohamed, I'm councillor for Ecclesall Ward and leader of the Lib Dem group, sorry.
Hi, I'm councillor Joe Otten, Member for Dorantotley and Chair of the Wasteland Street Trees Committee.
Councillor Angela Argento for Brumhill and Sharoville and Co-Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
Douglas Johnson, councillor for City Ward and Chair of Housing.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Julie Growcutt, Member for Stock, Speed, Drom Ward and Co-Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Dawn Dale, I'm Member for Shire Green and Brightside Ward and Co-Chair of Education, Children and Families Committee.
Good afternoon, councillor Brian Lodge, Member for Burley Ward and Co-Chair of Finance.
My name is Paul Wood and I represent the Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you, Paul.
Good afternoon, my name is Ashman Ali and I'm the Executive Director of Operational Services.
Afternoon, Greg Bell, Director of Public Health.
Good afternoon, I'm James Henderson, Director of Policy Performance and Communications.
Good afternoon, Kate Josephs, Chief Execk.
David Hollis, Interim Director of Legal and Governance.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Alexis Chapel, Studio Director for Adults and Wellbeing.
Afternoon, Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures.
Thanks, thanks everyone. Apologies for absence.
Non-received Chair.
Thank you. Exclusion of press, public and press, we've already highlighted that at item 14. Declarations of interest, is there any declarations of interest on today's agenda? No, thank you for that. Item five, the minutes of previous meetings, 24th and 7th and 21st of February, can we approve those minutes please? Agree? Okay, thank you. It is under procedural rule 14 that the leader will make an announcement under the procedural rule with regard to the publication of Sir Mark Lowcock's of the Sheffield Street Trees Report. What I would say on this is that members have obviously had an email from the Director of Legal in General, but we will make time for this and what I propose to do is that I will make my statement, I will take public questions, answer public questions, then open it up to members for questions and comments. We will then take that. At that moment, once we get to the end of that item, I would suggest that we then just adjourn for five minutes and then reset and come back for the rest of the agenda. We have got a facility to extend the time of the agenda, I propose that we will do that depending on, obviously, and we have got a lot of issues to do. We've got members here for, obviously, for the Sir Mark Lowcock's report, but we also got members here for the conversion as well. So I propose to do that. Can I just say agreement that we're okay with that? Is that okay? Thank you, thanks everyone. Okay. First of all, I just want to sincerely and unreserved offer apologies to everyone. I reiterated that at the public hearing that I attended with Sir Mark Lowcock and I did that last Tuesday and I do it again here. I got asked at the first media interview, what did I feel and what did I get from reading that report that I'd commissioned? I'd commissioned that report as one of the first things I did on being leader. My perception was it took me right back to there. I can only speak for my feelings, I understand how other people must feel. My anxiety levels have risen, my wellbeing has been challenged and I can only begin to understand what other people have gone through. One of my first commitments when I became leader was to go through this process of truth and reconciliation. Due to the fact that I had been in the middle of it that one year as cabinet member, I experienced that and obviously still feel as well. Before we begin, I would like to make a statement regarding into the Street Trees dispute by Sir Mark Lowcock. First of all, I want to thank Sir Mark Lowcock and for everyone who took part in that hearing. He read over a million documents, met a large number of people and came to his conclusions and recommendations and we wholeheartedly accept those recommendations. The Street Trees dispute was a dark period for Sheffield and ultimately was avoidable. Sir Mark's report makes clear that there was a sustained failure of strategic leadership within the council at the time and there were a series of mistakes and significant errors of judgment. This really goes right back to the time of the streets had contact and the business case, the risk assessments and the dispute went on until mediation in 2018. Sir Mark's report is clear that those failures, mistakes, errors of judgment caused substantial and irreversible harm to those involved, residents, campaigners and our own staff from the council and partner organisations are all included in that. We have said sorry about in the past of specific failings and as part of my evidence to the inquiry, I have given an unreserved apology for what went wrong during that time and I again reiterate at this meeting. To the people of Sheffield, to residents, to campaigners, to members of staff, to members, I am truly sorry. We got things badly wrong and I am determined, determined that we will not go back to those days of politics that we got ourselves into. And as leader and personally for me, I need to deal with this. As we knew it would be, the report is detailed, it's a tough read, there are plenty of own truths in there, it comes in 25 separate conclusions and makes 11 recommendations about reconciliation. And what we as a council need to do to change and how we operate so that this can never happen again, over 221 pages, it spells out what happened, why it happened and where different decisions could and should have been taken. It describes a paragraph of harm which is really a hard read and it's hard to hear, individuals, to communities, to environment and to the city's reputation and more importantly to the trust and confidence of the people of Sheffield that they have in this council, in me, and this is by far the worst. We accept all of those conclusions and recommendations completely and have committed to doing everything Sir Mark thinks we should. Following the local elections in May, we will bring forward a paper to this committee that will set out in detail how the council will respond to each of those recommendations as well as other points made in the paper where we need to learn lessons. To make this happen, I've asked the chief executive to work with our partners, including the campaign groups, the Street Tree partnerships, to develop a collaborative framework for reconciliation, taking on board all the recommendations made by Sir Mark in his report. And following the local elections, I would like members from all parties, all parties to be involved in that process too. I want to be clear that I know it's not up to the city council about how we reconcile. We can't say, right, that's it, it's over, let's move on. There's a lot, a lot of work to be done, a lot of personal apologies and a fair few uncomfortable conversations to be had and/or being had. To the best we can be as a council, we need to listen and agree with those affected by what this reconciliation looks like. As I said, we've had a good number of people to apologise to and it's important to me that those individuals are identified, that they get their apology personally from me, not through the media or through this council chamber, but from me. I want to do like I've always been brought up to do, eye to eye when I say sorry. Because I mean it, the report I've commissioned, which is going to set out what we are going to do and how we are going to do it, will be brought here first at the S and R so that we can have a full and open discussion, which is likely to be in June for debate and for endorsement by full council. One of the first acts as I made as leader coming in was commissioning this report and ensure that the council never makes mistakes and make all of this dispute and to make it right for so many people who were wronged. As Marcus said, identifying a lesson is not the same as learning it, so that paper will also describe in detail the process that we will go through to enable those lessons to be truly learned so that we do not make similar mistakes ever again. Let me be clear, we accept every recommendation in the report. There is one recommendation where I've asked officers to take immediate action because of the council is still causing ongoing harm. There are a number of campaigners who have still have outstanding financial claims against as a result of the legal action around that time of dispute. This was not a matter I was aware of until reading the report, although... Although the council have not been actively pursuing these claims for some time, we will drop those claims entirely from today, recognising the financial, the mental health and the wider burdens that have come, continue to impose on the individuals affected. I can further announce that we will also take steps to reimburse all campaigners against whom we pursue financial claims and who have already played those claims. As I said at the beginning, the Street Trees dispute was a dark time for this city and none of us want to return to those days again and I will not, will not, and certainly over the last two years as leader, I've tried to work consensually with all groups, all members and I do not want to enter back into those politics again. I do believe that we are all on the same page, we want the best for this city. All I've ever wanted to do was serve this city and repeating our mistakes is not an option. I reckon we really can move forward as a city, we can build on the good work of the past five years and move towards a brighter, kinder future. I want to finally say once again that I am unreservedly sorry. Thank you for listening to that. I will now take public questions, I've got a number of questions on one subject which obviously we'll discuss, I've got a number of questions from members of public on the others, I'll take those first. Can I first ask councillor Vicky Seddon to come to the mic and ask her a question please?
Thank you. Vicky Seddon, speaking on behalf of Sheffield for Democracy and this is not about the trees issue. I didn't know when I put the question in that this report was going to come to play. And the question I want to put to you is this, we understand, and by the way, I hope you've got the background paper that I've had distributed on the table for you, we understand that there's been some discussion about whether to move to an all-out, once every four years election system for our councillors amongst the councillors and their parties, but with no such change proposed. Such a change would bring us into line with Nottingham, Derby, Rotherham and Doncaster and the majority of unitary local authorities. Surely the low voter turnout for Sheffield's local elections is an indication that voters are not very happy with our current system. Isn't it about time that we, the voters, were consulted on this? The council hasn't had a very good reputation for listening to voters, isn't it about time on this issue in particular that you gave us some say? Thank you.
Thank you. And we have got the paper. Whilst we do keep such matters under review, there is no current proposal to move to the existing pattern by electing of thirds to the electing of all councils every four years. Were such a change to be proposed, then we would and in line with the law on changing electoral schemes and our wider commitment to listening to the views of local people, we would conduct a full consultation before such change went ahead. Thank you for your question. Can I ask James Martin, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. Through the work done with SEC's Electoral Service in preparation for accessibility provisions of the new Elections Act, we've encountered a near unanimous set of feedback across several focus groups that, across a varied set of disabilities, one of the biggest problems people face is a barrier to the access of information from candidates and parties. This is not something that officers can deal with, so how will parties in the city look to do their part in making elections more accessible in respect to the information they provide of what candidates and parties stand for? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, James. And first of all, can I, on behalf of the council, thank you for all your work you do with Disability Sheffield and certainly for your clear thoughts and actions with myself on through equality and disability. Thank you for that. As a background from that, from working with the elections team, which is, I know, to implement the no accessibility requirements, it would, obviously, I will ensure that all political parties are sent this question and therefore we can take on board your comments and work hopefully with yourselves about this situation. So thank you very much, fear not, I look forward to our next meeting, thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciated.
Can I ask Julie Penn, please, to ask her a question, Julie?
Yes, I have a follow-up question to a promise that was made in this council chamber by Terry Fox, that to start to remedy the shocking delay in responding to the Mayor of Nablus' invitation to a twinning arrangement with Sheffield, that a letter would be sent. And I am dismayed on a number of counts, Terry. The first being that although you promised that the letter had been sent, it was actually only, as has been admitted, it was only sent in the knowledge that this question was going to be raised, which was, when is the letter going to be sent and when would we have sight of it? The letter has now been sent and received and again, I want to express my dismay for a number of reasons. The first I have said, the second is that there's a half-truth in your letter, which is that you give as an excuse for the delay that there was to be a meeting with myself to further discussions as the person who passed on the invitation, which had been delayed by or had been cancelled because of Covid. Now, in fact, a subsequent meeting took place in March last year with yourself, Paul Blomfield, Julie Growcut and Alan Dedman and it was explicitly a meeting to pick up from that delayed meeting. And all the invitation, you said you didn't know that Tony Downing had received the invitation, it was all there and it was all discussed at that meeting. So I have to express my shock again. Secondly, in the, thirdly, in the letter, you say that now the subject of twinning and international arrangements has to be subject to review. Now, we know what that means, that means further delay. And I have to say that when it came to the invitation to twin with Kometskye in Ukraine, there was no need for a review. And we have to say that what we need to see is impartiality, a word that has been expressed quite a lot in relation to the BBC, we don't want double standards. Palestinians are daily being subject to extradition killings by the Israeli state. They have been made refugees, they have been the subject of a belligerent military occupation for 55 years. Now, that letter, there was no acknowledgement of that suffering and one of the things that we did in that meeting last year and the whole of the PALFest was to demonstrate to you the number of organisations, the number of individuals, the number of communities across this city who care passionately about this issue. This is an issue of human rights, it's an issue of conscience, it's also, it's an issue which is of very, very direct concern to many of the citizens of this city and I feel we, but much more importantly, the Palestinians are being profoundly let down. And so the second part of the question was, what is being put in place to remedy this inexcusable delay? Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And first of all, thank you for your kind acceptance to me. On the first part of that, I'd signed a letter off ages ago, so I'll check when it went, but I signed that letter and that's why, I think you asked the question, why I answered, but I'd signed that letter. We can have a conversation about the content of that, but I'd signed it ages ago, so I'll check why, if, or when the date that was sent, so we'll follow that up. I have an appetite to speak to the Mayor and to make up, but we've got a paper that's going round internally to do with the policy of twinning. We will look at whereabouts that is in our forward plans, but my understanding, we came to CMT and members are nodding, so it should be on its way, I will find that and fast track it, because what we want is to be able to work within that policy and so that we're able to fast track a number of offers and we've got a number of offers that we want to work to, we've got to have something to measure that on. I'll sit down and explain that situation, hopefully I'll get the dates and the timelines for you where you are, so exactly where we need to be. And I will get that for our meeting. As I said, I'll try, well, we aren't getting the date to get in before period, so apologies for that, but I'll get all that information, thank you for your time, Julie, much appreciated. Thanks, that's the questions from the floor. Can I now ask Russell Johnson to ask, I think you're asking another one as well, is that on behalf of... Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Members, officers, thank you for this opportunity to ask these questions today. As you indicated then councillor Fox, I have questions of my own, two short questions and then I've been asked to read a question from Ruth Hubbard and I'm told that Ms Josephs has authorised that despite the question being rather long. Are you nodding? You're not. Anyway, I shall go ahead until I'm stopped.
Please do, Russell, if you want to just make clear which question is yours, thank you.
I certainly will. Okay, so I have two short questions, as I said. Number one is this, one of the corporate responsibilities of this committee states this, considering reports which an ombudsman requires to be published by the council where it is proposed that the council takes the recommended action. Okay. Now, whilst the Lowcock report is not by the ombudsman, it does, I believe, have greater or equal standing and importance. How will this committee fulfil its responsibilities in properly responding to the excoriating Lowcock report, given that serious and sustained strategic failures have been identified? And I know you've addressed this to some extent, Terry, and I have to say at this point, I was disappointed that you haven't done the right thing, but I'll go on to my next question. Will the work of this committee in this respect be concluded in a timely manner such that SCC cannot again be perceived to be long grassing the matter in the hope that an angry public will be silenced, which is, as we now know, typical SCC behaviour? Okay, another of your purposes, as set out on the website for this committee, is this, responsibility for any issue identified as being of significant strategic importance or financial risk to the council, which is considered by its nature to be cross-cutting. Given the obvious strategic importance of this swingeing Lowcock critique, will this committee agree that addressing the Lowcock recommendations with honesty and transparency should be a priority and any further reputational damage to the council by obfuscation and delay should be avoided? Okay, that's my question. How do you want to take it, Terry? Do you want to answer those or shall I go on to the other one I'm reading?
Your BS, would you like me to answer those two first or do you want to get on while you're on your feet and ask that question?
I'll go on to the other one if that's all right with you. Okay, thank you. So I'm asking this on behalf of Ruth Hubbard, who most, many people here will know or will know, and her involvement in its South City and transforming this council to be more democratic. Okay. Learning the lessons of the damning inquiry report is the most immediate context in which I ask this question, but by no means the only one. Congratulations to officers on completing the corporate peer challenge when demands across the council are so high. And I would second that. However, I would like to request the committee considers pushing the pause button on agreeing the council's response and action plan. Now, I know, Terry, you've said something about this, but you might consider Ruth's proposal following this question. This is to allow, says Ruth, more time for wider consideration and understanding of the feedback and response, definitely for wider consultation... definitely for wider consultation and to try to mitigate further risk. In the case of, in inverted commas, Team Sheffield in particular, I want to sound some alarms about the risks involved and the need to think through very carefully and not just at the top or with the great and the good. Briefly, the feedback report, this is the peer review, I think it's called, has major implications for council reorientation. And so the response signals significant strategic, cultural and operational shifts. I looked across at other councils and I could not find any example where both a CPC feedback report and a full fixed action plan response was presented at the same time. And Ruth asked me to emphasise that this is a central point, that you couldn't present your action plan simultaneously because proper consideration cannot have happened. The reports have only just been made available for the public scrutiny. And the response, its response report itself acknowledges there has been no consultation on the feedback or on the response. Perhaps officers and members have already had much internal reflection and discussion about the feedback report, but this appears not to be the case. For example, some officers in some of the peer challenge discussions told me that they had only just seen the report and it bore no resemblance to those discussions. And they didn't recognise themselves in it. There has been no public consultation either. I appreciate this chief exec wants to try to move forward at pace, but wider consideration and some meaningful consultation is needed before sign-off. I think this could only enhance the proposals, deepen understanding and mitigate risks. And there's a bit more. For Team Sheffield, the approach is standard and very recognisable. But Sheffield is not standard. Some places have had real difficulty with this rather one-size-fits-all approach. In Bristol, they have a similar one-city approach. It has been highly controversial, is hated by many and has proved a flashpoint for dissent, resistance and anger. And people here know a bit about those things. I remind the committee that Sheffield is rather good at dissent. Yes, we are, indeed. And trust, and that trust in the council could probably not be lower. I concur with Ruth's observation on that matter. My Bristol contacts, including a well-informed journalist, say lots of people are excluded, including opposition councillors. It's behind closed doors. It's just the capitalists who are allowed. And the communities are just subject to it. All policy decisions must now go through One City Thinking, which is essentially a public-private partnership. The public sector pays for it, the private sector enjoys it. There's a bit more. I'm not getting into the politics in this. I think it might be a bit political, but anyway. But I suggest that there should be much clearer thinking and developmental work about how this aligns with the city. The Lowcoch report is only just out. It identifies big problems working with stakeholders and experts and citizens. Whatever the spin, I don't believe for a moment that the embedded culture has significantly shifted. That's highly significant in terms of what we're told, that things have changed. I concur again with Ruth. I don't believe there has been significant change yet. So when you shift gear and propose wholesale collaborative and partnership Team Sheffield strategy, it is likely to be very hard-won. Last paragraph. The risk is that Sheffield City Council repeats its big mistakes, given its history of defensive insularity, power hoarding, authoritarianism, lack of transparency, openness and honesty. The legacy is that the council is not trusted, so it is not easy to just get on and do things. This all needs further thinking through, consultation and great care. The history has to be taken into account and worked with. Thank you for listening, members, officers.
Thank you, Russell. I'll try and answer them as fully as I possibly can. The rest of Ruth, Ruth has sent a number of questions in and I will obviously get them written answers out to them, but I will answer specifically to them. As I, to your specific questions, if I may. As I have set out in the statements at the beginning of this meeting, I think it is really important that the council responds to the conclusions and recommendations of the local inquiry in full. To this, I have asked the chief executive to work with everyone involved, including campaigners, to develop a collaborative approach and a framework for reconciliation to be discussed at the first meeting of this committee following the election. I am not shying away from this or anything in the report. And I am committed to responding comprehensively and in public to everything that Sir Mark has identified. As I have said in answer to the first question, the council will work with all those affected over the coming weeks. And hopefully, we will bring forward a report at the earliest opportunity in the number municipal year, which will set out the council's proposed response to this. As Sir Mark did and has said, identifying a lesson is not the same, as I have said, of learning it. Therefore, that paper will also describe in detail the full process that we will go through to enable those lessons to be truly learned so that we do not make those similar mistakes in the future. If I can, just to answer the question you read out on behalf of Ruth Hubbard. We have made great strides, not enough, not far enough, to start turning this big tanker around and through that process in the local delivery model. We have become more accountable, open and transparent. We have put more on the web. Since I became leader in 2021, the fact that I commissioned both the Lowcoch report and agreed to the corporate peer challenges demonstrates that the commissioning, of course, is not the same as the learning. And we must ensure that everything possible is done in the correct way and to ensure reports are acted upon as best as they can be. As the questioner acknowledges that this is a long question to paraphrase, but you will hear today in the report around the corporate peer challenge and the recommendations. The corporate peer challenge report is the first time that Sheffield, as a whole organisation, had the peer review. The timing of the publication alongside the report of the Lowcoch review was unknown and unintended, that the CPC was commissioned before the reinforcers the need for concerted change. Whilst it is actually acknowledging and documenting that many areas of strength that this council has, there is a long way to go. Whilst it is important that the committee discusses and considers both the report and the action plan today, this should only be the start of the process of responding to the findings of that peer challenge. The action plan has been written so as to provide a high-level summary of the direction of travel needed. There will be lots of discussion, consultation with partners, stakeholders, and the detail of that is something I am happy to commit to and about the detail. And that is something I am happy to be done at all levels. And as much of what has officers to ensure, we have been taken forward in parts on other programmes of work, such as the six-month review of governance or the work on the city goals. Such a pause at this stage is likely to hinder our ability, but I will listen to what members say once we have that debate. There are recommendations in that peer review. And again, I will listen to what members say in that debate. Thank you. Can I, can I, can I ask, can I ask Mark, sorry, can I ask Richard Ward to ask his question, please, Richard?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to raise a question. Before I raise the question, I would probably observe that if we're going to be delayed to the extent that we were today, you might provide cushions for the comfort of the viewing public. So my question is, how does the committee propose to address the shortcomings in strategic leadership, both political and in professional services leadership by senior officers that have been laid bare in Sir Mark Lowcoch's report? The next question, which is related, is how will oversight of strategic change be managed? What performance measures will be put in place to provide reassurance to the public that progress is being made and effectively monitored? And how will the committee use those measures to monitor the clear strategic need for impactful cultural change from top to bottom in Sheffield City Council? And I realise there's necessarily going to be some overlap with the previous questions and your own statement, but I think it's important to place these questions on record and to hear what the responses are.
Thank you, Richard. And I totally agree that they need recording. Thank you. The Lowcoch report is clear. There is a sustained failure of strategic leadership within the council at the time. And there was a series of mistakes and significant errors of judgment dating right back to the time of the streets ahead contact was signed through the course of the dispute lasting until we got to mediation in 2018. The organisation has begun the process of change and we have put in place some key building blocks already. And we cannot take away from what has been achieved since the mediation in 2018. These include a new set of also organisational values, readily performance reporting to committees linked to my delivery plan and opening ourselves up to the external challenge and review, including through the corporate peer challenge review process, which this committee is discussing today. As the peer challenge report makes clear, although we have made some good first steps, we have a long, long way to go. That will require a continuing focus on changing our culture, working with citizens and communities of our city collectively and transforming the way we do business as an organisation. We have put in place a programme of change known as Future Sheffield and to provide that focus and capacity of this work. As part of the response to the Lowcoch report, which will be discussed at the first meeting, as I've said, as the strategy and resources after the election, we will set out how that work towards that individual recommendations of the report will be monitored and reviewed. And we will work, and we will describe how those actions will work in the Future Sheffield programme. Part of the report to regularly review and monitoring our programme of organisational and cultural change will be for the committee to regularly receive regular reports and to scrutinise and hold accounts that process be made. Thank you very much. Can I ask, apologies. Can I ask Isabel O'Leary, please, to ask your question? And followed by Annette Taber, sorry, I think they're both aligned on the same questions. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, in the light of Lowcoch's finding of a serious and sustained failure of strategic leadership, how can we have confidence in the important decisions to be taken by this committee? The Lowcoch report says the previous council leader and cabinet member overseeing streets ahead were primarily responsible for these failures. The council have stated that these serious errors of judgment were made by the previous administration and that the organisation is very different now. But how can the council move on? And how can trust be restored when two of those responsible for causing the harm to the trees, to the citizens of Sheffield and to the reputation of the city are still in very high positions of responsibility at Sheffield City Council? Their positions as councillors are untenable. And they need to go now.
Thank, 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 thank you. As I said right at the beginning, emotions are very raw. And I understand, but please, can we just use, just think about the language we're using? Thank you for those two questions. Very hard to hear from myself personally. Can I first just say that suggested response, as I said earlier, and I accept that Sir Mark's report identified serious failings of leadership during the time of the street trees dispute. I also explained that as an organisation, we are changing. As you can see today, there is a different way of working. But what is also clear is the work that is ongoing to rebuild the trust and confidence of the people of Sheffield. This includes the move to committee system with more councillors taking decisions openly and transparently. The introduction of our local area committees to enable people to have more say about the things happening in our communities, toward us to more account and the changes that are already underway, as part of, as I said, the Future Sheffield programme. The work of the Street Tree Partnership itself is an example of how we are working differently, utilising the experience and expertise of people with different backgrounds and different perspectives, but working together consensually for the good of the city's street trees and the wider benefits they bring. We know it will take time to rebuild trust and confidence. We know that once it's lost, trust is not required, it is earned. To regain that trust, but I am determined that I will put that hard work in. All I've ever wanted to do was serve this city, both in this committee and across this council. And that over the coming months and years, we will work with the public, partners and stakeholders to create what we want, the future. Thank you for answering those questions. Thank you. Sorry, I missed Annette Taber's question.
Thank you for your statement, which I listened to as well as I can on this not very efficient communication system. What I don't think you've grasped, Terry, is that you keep talking about we are going forward or we actually don't want to go forward with you because we have no trust in you. We have no faith in you. And you are a symbol of what happened to people in this city for four and a half years on our streets. It's too little and it's too late. You have no sense of urgency. You knew the report was coming out on Monday and you did nothing. And it's only on this agenda because people out there have pushed you. I'm sick of hearing that the culture's changed. It changed because you lost control and the Green Party asked for an independent report. And the committee system changed because thousands and thousands of people in this city raised their voices on a petition, got a referendum and changed it. So please, less of this Road to Damascus revelation. Change has come about in this city because of the citizens of this city who are sick to death of the way that it is being administered. I do hope you listened. I do hope that you listened carefully to Sir Mark Lawson on Radio 4 this morning on the Today Programme. If you didn't, I suggest you play it on repeat until it sinks into your head. When my children were five, they knew that if you acted, you took responsibility. And if you did things wrong, there were consequences. Well, we've all stood up and we've suffered the consequences. And you're still the leader of our council. You need to go and you need to go now. You're the albatross around the neck of this city and nothing will improve until you and your colleagues, who are itemised in the report, make way for other people. You've had your chance, you've blown it. My question seems a bit irrelevant, to be honest, but I will give it to you anyway. Can I just also say, the sense of urgency is too late to apologise to four of my friends from the campaign. They're dead. They gave the last years of their lives to try and stop the destruction of our trees. You can't apologise to them. We've been to their funerals. We know they're not here anymore. It's too late. You need to get a sense of urgency. And after the local elections and after Pirda will not be fast enough. My question. The council has two important reports on its desk. Can I just say, this is only reflective of a tiny, tiny bit of the anger that's out there? You could have talked, you say, talk to us. You could have talked to us for any time before you. I asked my MP to talk to me. I asked him to talk to the campaign. He refused in a public meeting. in a public meeting! You have two documents on your desk, a peer review document, which is on this agenda and was always on this agenda, and Sir Mark Lowcock's report, a damning report into the malice registration of this council. That report wasn't even on this agenda until people like us started kicking up a fuss. The catalogue of systematic council failings and disturbing behaviour of councillors and senior staff in this authority are mind-blowing, mind-blowing! So why are those councillors still in position of responsibility when this city has lost all confidence in you, when you've dragged our city through the mud? Why are you still here? And when, before Perder, do you intend to meet as a full council? Because this is not good enough, you knew the report was coming out earlier this month, and you made no preparations, and we're sick to death of the PR campaign, sick to death! Already, I've seen an article in the Arbiterius magazine telling us how sorry you are and that you've all changed. You've done that before you've talked to us. Not good enough. You need to go, and you need to go now. There's no way forward with the people who've been, have got evidence-based criticism in that report. Sir Mark Lowcock sounded absolutely flabbergasted that you were still here on Radio 4 this morning, I suggest you listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Annette, for the question. As I set out in my earlier statement, the council's response to the LowCock report will be brought forward to the discussion and debate to the first meeting of this committee following those local elections. This will follow a process of open and collective discussion with those involved in the Street Tree dispute, led by the chief executive and with a real focus on what we need to do. Thank you, everybody, for that session. What we will do now is we'll go to members' questions and discussion. But sorry, I'll just hand over, sorry, I'll just, sorry, I'll just hand on to Ed of Legal, David.
We appreciate that feelings are running extremely high and understand why that is. There are going to be interjections, we understand that, but could I please ask that you do the courtesy of allowing the speakers to finish their speeches and allow them to say what they want to say, and anybody who actually disrupts the smooth flowing of this meeting will be asked to leave. But we are going to give a little bit more consideration than we normally would given how, how high feelings are running.
Thank, thank, thank you, David. Brian, Joel.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to offer my sincere and unequivocal apology to everyone for what happened during the two-year period when I was a cabinet member with responsibility for the Street Tree replacement programme. The conclusions that the report draws, the conclusions that the report draws are beyond dispute. From the announcement that there would be an inquiry, I made it clear that I would fully cooperate, and in doing so, I gave public and private interviews with Sir Mark, something that I didn't have to do, something he explained I didn't have to do, but it was something that not everyone else chose to do. Prior to the start of the public interview, I advised Sir Mark that I hadn't watched any of the other interviews, as I did not want my responses to any of his questions to be influenced by the comments of others. I have said many times that whilst the 84 elected members of this council come from different political parties and may have differences of opinion about how we achieve it, we are all united in one clear goal: all are working for the betterment of the city. I have always sought to keep that premise at the forefront of whatever roles I have been asked to fill. When I was asked in May 2016 to take on the role of cabinet member, I did so with a degree of hesitation, but I accepted the role, understanding that there may be some difficult decisions ahead. With hindsight, it's abundantly clear that I didn't fully appreciate what lay ahead, and on many occasions, my judgement was flawed. For the resultant harm that was caused to individuals and to the reputation of Sheffield, I will be eternally sorry. It was never, ever my intention that anyone be hurt, and I hope that the publication of Sir Mark's report allows some closure from events, with many feeling vindicated for the stoic campaign they participated in. I understand that and I respect it. I also understand the call for me to resign from my current role within the council, and on the day the report was published, I offered my resignation to councillor Fox. It would have been very, very easy for me on Monday evening to have resigned as a councillor and walked away, in what could have been considered as a cowardly response. Instead, I chose to stay as a city councillor. I respect councillor Fox for his decision not to accept my resignation as co-chair of the finance subcommittee and the reasoning behind it. Reflecting on the changes in the culture and operation, I know that Sheffield City Council is a substantially different organisation from 2016. The new cross-party working across the committee system is delivering benefits to our city, no longer mired in the outdated tribalism. I am extremely proud to be a city councillor and humbled to have been able to work in a number of roles across the city. It's my desire to continue to be a strong voice for the city and its residents. I hope by working together, we can all move forward from what Sir Mark was right in describing as a dark period for Sheffield. I am deeply sorry.
Thank you, Brian. Joel? Please, can we, I understand how raw this is, I really do, because I am feeling it, and it's not comfortable listening to as well, but I just, let's listen to the debate, please. I do not want to go back to the politics of those days. I do not, I do not want to go back to the politics in those days. We are a much different way of working, a very consensual, a very consensual way of working, and I will give everybody the opportunity to have their say. Joel?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair, thank you for letting me in. I do have a few comments on the report and on your statements, and, you know, they may well be added to this document, I'm afraid. Firstly, I mean, you have said a number of times, you said to the press that this is a report that you commissioned, and I think certainly the impression I have is that it's a report that opposition parties had been calling for for some time, and was conceded, was conceded as a prize for the coalition that was running the council last year. That's, now, you know, if you also personally wished for it to happen anyway, then, then, you know, I have no, I have no evidence against that, but I think the complete picture is that, you know, it's a report that we all wanted to see. Now, I said at the time, I was an opposition member for the, on this council, for the highway programme for many years, and what I said when the petitions started coming is that for goodness sake, we are the customer here, we are spending an awful lot of money on this service, surely we should be getting what we want for that money and not hiding behind, you know, conditions of the contract that we have to do it this way and we have to cut down all these trees. And I said the same to the LowCock inquiry when I gave evidence. And I now realise how wrong I was, that the defence that, you know, we have to do this, it's in the contract, that wasn't the case at all. We were told we were stuck in the contract, but we now learn that Amy wanted to compromise, Amy wanted to pause, and the council said no. I went to the Police and Crimes, I was a member also of the Police and Crime Panel, I went there and I challenged Dr Alan Billings, the police commissioner, on the policing of the protests. Now I learn that it wasn't a case of the police being heavy-handed on their own initiative with the protest, we now learn the council was considering a judicial review of the police to require them to arrest more protesters than they were doing. Now, if we've managed to make, if the council's managed to make South Yorkshire Police the good guys in something, I mean, that is perhaps an achievement, but considering some of their, some of their history, but, you know, and I don't want to add criticism to the police now, because I think the police are a transformed organisation from ten or more years ago. But I think possibly we need to add, as the council, add to our list of people to apologise to, South Yorkshire Police and Amy for having used them as a kind of human shields in the council's agenda, having used the police as a tool for its own political purposes. It is not a good sign when the police are used to advance, you know, a political cause. So, so I think, I think we can add, I think we should add those two groups to the list of apologies. Amy in particular, and having worked with Amy now under the Western Street scene, now doing the things that I said we could have done, and I appreciate it started before, before this year, in terms of working with the community and being flexible on the standards of the contract that we've told for many years was impossible, in order to save more trees, which is what we're now doing. Amy, yes, it's a private company, but it's populated by human people, human beings, and they were doing their job, and they were putting, they were put on the front line of this. I was tempted to go to another Putin analogy about putting innocent people on the front line, but maybe we've had enough of that, maybe we've had enough of that. So, the question at the end of all this is, I mean, it's a little bit old-fashioned to say, you know, you do something wrong and you resign, but I do wonder what it would take to merit resignations over, over these events and the content of that, the content of that report. Thank you.
Thank you, well, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if anybody else could say this, but I wasn't actually a resident of Sheffield when this was all kicking off, and I think that gives me a slight advantage of being able to read the report without some of the colour and history behind it. That's not to say I don't fully understand the emotion that's been coming down from the gallery, I fully get it, but it's my perspective. So I've looked at that report, and it is damning, and the number of things I would like to highlight is things like these early, early attempts to cut down healthy trees, riding rough, this is not staged, riding roughshod around public opinion, driving the police to make more arrests, as Joe has said, investigating an option to take action against the police for not doing those arrests, gangs of stewards on the streets of Sheffield trying to control people, and generally just ignoring what the public wants. And the question that keeps on going round to me in my mind time and time again is how did anybody in the administration at the time, the Labour administration, think that this was an appropriate and proper way for an elected council to behave? Where were the checks and balances, and why was nobody in the Labour administration brave enough to stand up and say in public, is this really the right thing we should be doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Sir Fyke?
Thank you, Chair, I mean, it's a very difficult meeting for everyone, and particularly yourself. I mean, I gave evidence to Mr Mark, I offered to give it publicly, but Sir Mark was very happy just to take the evidence I gave him. I was honest and frank with him in terms of our involvement, myself in particular as the councillor for Ecclesall from 2015 onwards, when the first big issue, I would say, Chair, Ruslin's Road came, came into being. And, you know, I was amazed at the time of what was happening, that as a local councillor, that the fact that something as big as that was happening in my ward, that no one in this building felt they could at least trust me, to at least forewarn me, and it was residents, random numbers, very early in the morning, ringing me up, and often in tears to say, you need to come down here, and they felt bullied and intimidated. They were crying because authority had way-stepped the mark. And when I arrived there, it was a sea of men in high visors, wearing and basically blocking the street off, and by that time, Jenny and Freda had already been frogmarched away to a police cell. These are ladies that have never seen the back of a police car, they're on a police cell. And, and people were in tears, and we ended up, Joe was there as well actually, we ended up in the garden of the final tree, and it was because of, not us, it was the residents, standing there that that tree survived. And what that did do is put us as a city on the map for all the wrong reasons. And I'm not sure people got it in here at the time, but I remember going abroad, 4,000 miles away, and the media were interested in a local story around the environment, and the first thing they said to us, said to me when they introduced me to film was, oh, we're now joined by councillor Shafak Mohammed, the senior councillor in the city of Sheffield, the United Kingdom, is the place where they are chopping trees down, and we've got a similar problem, and is there anything you can tell us, Shafak, how we can convince the local authority here to not destroy our environment? And I said, well, you know, probably Sheffield is not the best place at the moment to lecture anyone about our environment. And for me, there are some real lessons and apologies to give, but there's some people you can't apologise to, and Alan Robshaw is one of them. The residents of Ruslin's Road came and gave evidence of those meetings that councillor Fox chaired, he's now passed away. There's, you know, one of the ladies that spoke earlier, there's others, and, you know, we've got to move on. And I know at the moment, there's a lot of anger towards councillor Lodge and councillor Fox, but actually, the way I reflect on it, some of the people that made those mistakes have simply walked away and not been held to account, and that includes a former, that includes the former leader of council that I was disappointed in, that didn't give her evidence in public, because I'm sure all of us would have liked to at least heard from her. And similarly, the former deputy leader, who now is a member of parliament for this country, let's not forget that Ruslin's Road and Western Road Trees are in that committee. And I remember being in this chamber when councillor Alison Teal was basically thrown out, and we left with her in solidarity, even though she wasn't a member of my party. And I remember being asked to go to a council, a meeting, a closed council meeting, where I thought we were going to rebuild some bridges, and all I had was the leader at the time, Julie Daw, and Olivia Blake, basically shouting at me, how dare I left that council meeting, they didn't care about the Greens being thrown out, it was us leaving, and demanding that I sign a letter of apology, and I would never, ever do that again. And that, I thought, you don't get it, I thought we'd come here to actually come together, and instead you're still doing what you're doing. Now, we as a city have to move on from this, and it's a genuine question I asked when the report first came out, can we move on with some of the key players? And that's wider than just councillor Lodge and Fox, because that top table are full of people that also behaved opponentally to all of you, and I'm not sure that they can just keep their heads down, they also have to be held accountable. And so therefore, I think there's a lot of soul-searching that has to be done within the Labour group about how they can, if they can ever, take the city forward and who's best placed to do that. I've given my opinions publicly in the statement, I'm not going to reiterate it then today, about whether I think some individuals should stay in post or not, but it has been a dark period in our history, and I really hope that lessons can be learnt. And, you know, Chair, I don't want to say much more than that, because I'm sure the colleagues want to, but I just want to generally say what I felt today.
Thank you, Shafak, and it is an opportunity for people to say what they want to say. I've got two more speakers, is there anybody else of three? I've got Douglas, Angela and Martin, and then on that we'll then adjourn and say five. Thank you, Martin. Douglas?
Thanks then, okay. So just, first of all, re-welcome the report that's come out. It's obviously difficult, as people can see, in some ways, it's absolutely what's needed. Just going back to the points made earlier on, so the origin of the report came about where, when councillor LowCock and Fox were in a room with me and councillor Teal, as she was then, it was actually Alison's idea, we need to get this on the table, it was negotiated as part of the negotiations in May 2021, to have an inquiry, and in particular to look at this issue of truth and reconciliation. It was really well developed by Mark Lowcock later on, as I said, that's exactly what needs. But the reason that it came together at that point, and, you know, to be fair, credit to the Labour group at that time for agreeing to have this inquiry, which they ought to have known was going to be really damning into the Labour group, but credit to them. It was important because we'd just been through the referendum, and the referendum had come about because huge... numbers of people in Sheffield had signed the petition, forcing the councillor to hold the referendum, because it was clear by that time that the council was dysfunctional. It simply was not functioning in the way that our council needed to function. That's why we had it. And it wasn't just a few people. We had 26,000 signatures, didn't we? But behind that, we had, and that's a big proportion of all the adults in Sheffield, behind that we had lots of people right across the city who had completely lost faith in the way that the city was being governed. That's why we did it. Yeah, we're grateful that people voted in more green councillors. It's not just because we want to be councillors here, but because the council has to function better under a system of no other control, where there is dialogue. And we do now have three functioning parties in the council. That means that you can't get anything that easily under the radar now. So it's important. And the other thing that came out really strongly in Mark Lowcock's report was about the harm done to people, lots of people. And we now know long lasting harm. And we can't pretend that didn't happen. And that means when it comes to reconciliation, that's really important, but it's going to take a bit more time than that we can just say it's time to move on now. It is going to take time, because it takes time for the truth to bed in. So it's a bit like going through a bereavement. It takes time. And you have to work through that. So the recommendations in the report are really, really important. And we're going to have to spend some time as a whole council and a whole public, working through those, and looking for a longer term action plan to really change the culture of this. Now, there's something that agree with what's been said here. Actually, the culture of the council has changed. So, I mean, I was elected in 2016, and the council chamber on this full council day was a pretty belligerent and unpleasant and bullying place to be. Not a good place at all. Okay, yeah, most of you know that too. Those of us who've been around longer than councillor Williams know that, because we've seen it. And it is fair to say that, you know, the tone has changed now. The way the council functions with the committee system is very different now. I have to say also, we have had, you know, almost complete changeover of our senior officers. We've got a lot of the people in the room now who are new to the city council, certainly many new to the city. Some good guys in the room now, so there is hope there. Not everything, not everything has changed. So, you know, no one's going to say, or no one should say, that we're there yet. And so this reflects on, you know, the need to go through the recommendations really, really carefully. But in that, I think there's something to say that we need to be just mindful of those, some of those quiet voices in the room, and not dismiss people just because they disagree with us. Not even me. There were quiet voices. And actually, councillor Williams made exactly the right, you asked exactly the right question, where were the checks and balances? And actually, a lot of the tone of the Lowcott report is that the checks and balances had failed. So we know that only a few people were involved in the decision making. You point out, you know, some in the room still, but there were a few people for many years doing the decision making. Where were the checks and balances? To be fair, the leadership of the political group had their backing of their own party that didn't pull them up on that. Those checks and balances failed. But equally, the opposition parties failed then. Not trying to be smug, I wasn't the one on the council then. There were just two voices speaking out there. It wasn't Angela and me. Yeah, we had two green councillors. Mark Lowcott noted that there were, you know, 82 out of 84 councillors voted to support the general thrust of this scheme, which we now know was fundamentally flawed from the outset. Before the contract was signed in 2012, we know the contract was flawed. And that's because the whole approach to decision making was flawed. What was wanted was, you know, this drive to enter into this massive PFI of this big top down project. There were people saying that, you know, this is possibly a mistake. And, you know, credit, actually, see, former councillor Crease is in the gallery too. But, you know, credit, there were people speaking out there. So one of the lessons we have to learn, I think, is that we need to hear those small, quiet voices who might well have something sensible to say, and not let it be drowned out by all the noise and shouting. That's going to be a longer term lesson to feed through, because actually, sometimes you have to listen out for those quiet voices. So I'm just going to leave that there, because there is a lot of work to be done. But really useful, and hopefully when we're ready, we'll move on to the reconciliation phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Angela?
Thanks, Mary. Yes, I don't want to repeat lots of the stuff that's already been said. I was a secondary school teacher for 16 years, most of them in Sheffield. And I used to teach French and Spanish, GCSE level. And we always had a module about your local area and describing Sheffield. And it always amazed me how little my students knew about Sheffield and how dismissive they were about Sheffield, which is a city I love. And I remember, I always used to tell them Sheffield was the greenest city in Sheffield with the most trees per capita. And then Sheffield came in the news nationally, because we were chopping our trees. And, you know, and I remember having the conversations with my students at the time. But what I want to say is that the lessons are really hard to learn, and we're still doing it. So for example, I'll just give you a little example. Yesterday, I came in in planning, because there was a planning application put through by our own officers who do not listen to local people. And nobody could represent the residents, so I had to reschedule my work to come in to speak on behalf of Be Best, the first neighbourhood plan in Sheffield, about an application that they put opposition on three times. I was told by the relevant officer that because we had opposed in 2021, they were not requested to let us know that the application was coming to committee yesterday in 2023, and we were supposed to track it down. So how is that accessible? Also, officers not taking into account the fact that people know about the ecology of their local area and giving really sloppy excuses for development in an area where there's been a green space for hundreds of years, that now is going to be built on and people are not happy. So we are still not listening to the quiet voices. We're still doing what we do, because somehow officers know better. Officers don't know better. They don't even know where that place is, but they still, you know, all the Lib Dems voted for it, and most of Labour voted for it. And it was only one, thank goodness, Labour member and the Green member that was on the committee, they voted against. People are still not listening. We're still working in silos. We're still not learning the lessons. We still make the same mistakes over and over again, because we are arrogant and we think that we know best.
Thank you, Angela. Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Being last, I agree a lot with what has already been said. But I don't want to talk about specific individuals, and I don't want to talk about specific political parties. I want to take that off the table. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Beg your pardon. I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I agree with an awful lot of it. But I don't want to talk about individuals, and I don't want to talk about specific parties. I want to talk about the fact that it's not a short term fix, that the work that we have to do as a council is going to be really hard, and it's going to take a long time. Because we've taken as a council and as a city, a huge reputational hit. And it's not just impacting on individuals. As Chair of the Economic Committee, I've got a concern that it affects the way that potential investors see us as a city. And I would like to see coming out of this, as well as the short term implications that we've all discussed, and I'm not going to repeat them, we need to have a really hard think about how we want to portray ourselves to the city. If you Google Sheffield today, guess what comes up? What we've just been talking about. And also, as Angela said, you know, how do we portray ourselves to the world? Well, if you look behind, if you look on those two screens there, we portray ourselves as the green city. And as Angela said, that's not consistent with what has happened. So I just want to say I agree with a lot that has been said, but I'd really like to see that concerted effort, looking at how we repair our reputational damage, and how we portray ourselves to the rest of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for taking part in that. What I will say is that that report will be drawn up. The chief executive will be commissioned to get on with talking to partners, stakeholders, residents, campaigners, and everyone involved, and also with members, and members' engagement between members and officers, as has been highlighted. And I thank everybody for this part of the meeting. Can I now ask that we have a 10 minute adjournment? Thanks, everybody. And I'll see you back in 10 minutes. Thank you. To Dr Nikki Cowan. In all of, because it was on a separate piece of paper, Nikki, your question got to the bottom of the list, and with everything else that was going off. So apologies, they didn't get a chance to ask your question. Would you like, are we now back on? Thank you. Would you like to ask your question? Thank you. Oh, is, yeah, okay.
Hello. My name's Dr, I'm Nikki Cowan. I'm a psychiatrist, and I work for the Ministry of Justice on the Tribunal Service. So it's all about evidence for me. And I am very concerned about a report which is due to come before this committee today, which calls for a ban on conversion therapy, which sounds very laudable, but isn't as simple as it seems. I'm not going to comment on gay conversion therapy, because I know nothing about that. But it's calling for a ban on trans conversion therapy, which again, as I say, it sounds laudable, but it's not what it seems, because this report specifically says that psychotherapy could be seen as conversion therapy. Now, the report, which was written by, I think, Jeanette Kerr, Chief Social Worker, what I'm really disturbed about is it makes no reference to the current evidence, which is the interim Hillary Cass report. I don't know if people are aware of the scandal that took place at the Tavistock Clinic, which is the only UK clinic for gender confused children and adolescents. And after Keira Bell, a detransitioner, took the Tavistock to judicial review, that triggered an in-depth report by Dr Hillary Cass, who is a very respected paediatrician. She was Chair of the Royal College of Paediatricians. Now, what she found, which echoed, what basically echoed what a lot of whistleblowers were saying, and she did a really thorough report, she interviewed basically everyone, patients, clinicians, clinicians who were for what the Tavistock were doing, clinicians who were against it, relatives of patients. And she said, why isn't anyone asking any questions as to why there's a massive increase? It's something like over 4,000% of referrals to the Tavistock Clinic, with a reversal of the previous pattern of boys who from basically toddlerhood had thought they might be girls to girls usually just on the edge of puberty, who suddenly decided that they were boys. And no one asked any questions about that. And increasingly, over the years since the Tavistock's inception, the strategy was advised by what basically lobby groups, mermaids, key one, mermaids, which is now under investigation by the Charity Commission for distributing breast binders to girls without their parents' permission. And clinicians were increasingly felt either pressured or agreed with the policy of affirmation only. Now, these children who was presenting with gender, if you like, gender dysphoria or gender confusion, had an overwhelming number of, they were very complex cases, loads of them were kids that had been in care, highly disproportionate number of those, i.e. they had histories of trauma and attachment. There were loads of children who were on the autistic spectrum, whereby things tend to be very black or white, lots of other problems, eating disorders. And what happened, what Dr Hillary Cass talked about, was diagnostic overshadowing. So they were put on puberty blockers very quickly, which basically off licence, with very little evidence of their long term effects, meant to be a pause, but actually, something like 90% of those put on puberty blockers went on to cross sex hormones, which are irreversible largely. Even puberty blockers have side effects and are not thoroughly researched, and they weren't being researched. And research wasn't being done, follow up wasn't being done. So what I'm saying is, obviously, you've heard a lot about trees, and it's very embarrassing for the council. This is not, this is not just potentially embarrassing for the council, that you are, if you endorse something which has not looked at the evidence, and I think that's been a theme, hasn't it, not looking at the evidence, not listening to evidence. If you endorse this report and say, let's ban conversion therapy, maybe not now, but further down the line, you could be very embarrassed. And that's not to mention, of course, the damage you could be doing to children, especially as you have responsibility for children through your social work departments and to some extent through education. Not only could you be doing damage to children, because the updated NHS guidance, which are based on the Hillary Cass report, said that even social transition should be considered an intervention and shouldn't be done without specialist CAMs support. Now, that support hasn't been set up yet. So you could be very embarrassed in further down the line. There will be class actions by detransitioners that it started in the States. So my big question, it's really a plea, please do not endorse this policy without first at least reading the interim Cass report and showing that you've understood it. That report made no reference to it whatsoever, which I do find shocking. And Hillary Cass's final report is out at the end of the year, apparently, which is basically more about what research they should be doing. So I would say to the councillors, please, I've sent you a letter, it's got the updated draft NHS guidance, it basically summarises the Cass report, please do not endorse this. Please think about it carefully, look at the evidence, evidence above ideology and powerful lobby groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. And I did want to give you an opportunity to say what you wanted to say. So thanks for that. Could I ask members if we could move this up the agenda and discuss right now? Is that okay to take this, please? Okay then, if we take item 13 first, can we move, who's presenting for this? Can you come in and give your names, please, to the committee?
Hello, my name's Jeanette Kerr. I work in adult health and social care, and I'm an Assistant Director and Chief Social Work Officer. I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Hello, my name's Jeanette Monday. I work for Janet in the local authority, within adult safeguarding.
My name's Chrissie Malidi. I'm Chief Executive of Equality and Human Rights UK.
Be careful, hang it up. I'm sorry, I don't want it to fall, Vicky. Would you want to come downstairs to listen to the debate rather than hang it up? Is that okay? It's a good one. Sorry, I didn't want it to fall, Vicky, to be honest with you. If you want to come down and proceed, thank you.
Shall I wait till they've arrived?
Oh, we're back on. Thank you, and thanks, everybody, and thanks, Nikki and Vicky. She's on. Okay, all these two officers to present?
Thank you. I'll just do a very quick introduction, because Jeanette and Chrissie, the people who have been involved in more of the detail of this work. But I think one of the things, the question's interesting, because I think one of the things I need to be clear about is I work in adult health and social care. I'm not responsible for children, I don't work with children. And the reason we started down this path, as we had a referral into our safeguarding setup, basically from someone who'd been part of gay conversion therapy in a church they attended. So it'd been referred to as a safeguarding issue. When we looked at it, because of the way adult safeguarding works, this person didn't basically meet the test for us to do an investigation and deal with it. But we were sufficiently concerned about what we'd heard had happened to want to try and do something, because we were, I mean, we were shocked, I think, that... we were, I mean, we were shocked, I think, that this person had been put through what he had been put through and had been traumatised for it. So I think just to say, you know, just in response to the question I've already heard, this was never meant to refer to children, it was never meant to be about children, and I think maybe that's something we need to clarify, or something we need to change and include and talk to our children, colleagues more about, but that was never what it was aimed at. It was specifically, we got into this because of someone who was gay, who attended a church, who would put him through this process. So I think, the other thing is, this is a practice statement, it's not a policy, so we're not, in my head, if it was a policy, we'd be encouraging something, we're not encouraging something, we're saying, this is a statement about how we feel, this is discriminatory, we don't like this behaviour, we don't think it should happen, and we want to raise awareness to others in Sheffield that we don't think this should be happening, but as I say, specifically around adults. So I think as we've moved forward and we've got more questions, we're not, this is not cut and dried, we're quite happy, we've struggled a bit to get people to consult with us, we have had consultations, we've been put in touch, I think Angela, you put us in touch with some people, and we have talked to people, but we're very happy to talk more to people, we're not seeing this as something that there's a full stop and then nothing else happens, we're very willing to listen. So if I finish my introduction here and then pass over to Jeanette and Chrissie.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, if I can just say something, we did take this to the Children's Safeguarding Board, who actually do want to endorse it in principle and use it for young people and children. We do know that it's something that potentially can affect young people and children, but I just, when I listen to the question, I've just got something that I'd just, you know, like to just share with you, because what we don't want is unintended consequences, so i.e. we don't want affirmation when it comes to children, we don't want affirmation and treatment too soon, but neither do we want practices that eliminate and suppress identities, which could be a deliberate attempt at conversion practices, especially when it comes to children. However, it can't say everything in that statement, it could potentially be pages and pages long, and we're happy to tweak it and to look at it again, especially when it comes to children, but there is an expectation that there are professional and ethical decisions based on what's right for that child if children do adopt it, made by qualified and informed professionals. I think what we're trying to promote is, yeah, children do need help, children who are in distress relating to their sexual orientation or gender identity, they want to understand themselves better. But I have read the CAS report, and that specifically, from what I've read of it, and I'm certainly not an expert, that seemed to be more about clinical, excuse me, clinical intervention, that's not what we're endorsing or proposing at all. We just want to, if, sorry, if I can just read, if I can just read something out, I'm assuming you've all had the papers, but I just want to give you the definition of conversion practice that we've proposed in this position statement, I think that would be helpful. So conversion practice is an intervention that seeks to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. Conversion practice works towards one goal, and that goal is to cure someone from being lesbian, gay, bisexual or transsexual. The proposal for a position statement supports the rights and autonomy of all people, so that's what we're proposing, a cure, not, there's further conversations to be had, we are not saying this is the final statement, we're happy to make tweaks, particularly when it comes to adopting it for children and young people again, but as Jeanette said, it started off within adult services, and we don't want unintended consequences.
Thank you, thanks ever so much. Can we have a question, oh, sorry, Chrissie, sorry, this one, sorry.
It's all right.
It'll get me back in a bit.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed. Yeah, can I just say, in terms of the work that we've been doing, if I can just explain to you the situation that we're facing here in the city and more broadly, alone last year we dealt as an organisation, this is us alone, without any of the other organisations in the city, we dealt with 178 cases of exorcisms in the city. And these exorcisms related to people in terms of their sexual orientation, people who are intersex, for example, somebody with Kleinfelter syndrome, and we've had several of those cases, in terms of having increased hormones of male, female hormones, for example, people who have Turner syndrome being put through exorcisms in the city. So these exorcisms are either with rugby in terms of the Muslim community or within Christian churches, as well as other faith groups. And some of the activities that we've had to engage in is them being put through prayer sessions initially, they're brought in as prayer sessions, then they get put through deliverance sessions where they're told that they have the demon of homosexuality in them, or they have some other form of demons. For those who have intersex presentations and identities, they're being blamed through these exorcisms for the demon of their ancestral curse and things that ancestors and their genetic line have done in a past life, and they're being put through these as a result of the way that they're born, that's a curse that's been put on them, and that they have to make recompense for that. The impact of this, even in this year alone, so that was 2022, this year in January we've dealt with 21 cases, in February 23 cases, and in March alone, nine cases here in this city. And if we replicate that across the UK, you can imagine how many cases that have been dealt with on a regular basis. These are all adult cases, I need to say, because the policy, not policy, the position statement, is one relating to adults. The CAS report and CAS review makes very clear that they're not in support of conversion practices, they're not in support of it, they're contrary to that type of practice, that type of intervention, and we're dealing with that in terms of children and adolescents, but we're talking here in terms of adults. I would like to say to you, the impact of what's been happening, people being taken from their homes, being taken to airports, to be sent abroad, to be into forced marriages in terms of changing their sexual orientation, or to have corrective surgery, is endemic, really, the major concerns that we have in our communities, that some intervention needs to happen, and to be honest, it's been a disgrace for a long time that local authorities have not had statements and position statements to intervene in these cases. You know, we've had in the city alone, conversion practices taking place against these people, but also to convert people in relation and to blame them for the demons that they have, if they've got epilepsy, if they have autism. In one church, we had 250 people in one church service alone being put through this type of practice and exorcism, on the basis of mental health conditions that they have, epilepsy and other conditions that they're born with in terms of autism, and which is a neurodisability. So when we're talking about the necessity to intervene in this practice from an equalities and human rights perspective, people's human rights have been stripped, their safety has been stripped, you know, it's only Sheffield has been leading with this, Manchester leads and others are coming on board with it, but really, it should have been in place a very long time ago, and people in terms of their identity, their right to have an expression of their identity as adults is very important. We're talking about consent, and people are saying, well, they've consented to this, but you have to place yourself in conditions where people are coming sometimes from communities and religion and faith backgrounds, wanting to belong, wanting to be part of something, not to be condemned for who they are. And so they do consent in a way, but that's coercive consent, that's been forced on them to agree to things, that's not, you know, what they really are. And we have a high incidence of people trying to die by suicide, who are engaging in self-harm as a result of this. And can I also make expression for another group of people, who in the early 60s and 70s, when they were born with intersex conditions and presentations, you know, sometimes they were not x-rayed and checked, they would have been ascribed an identity at that stage, later put through sometimes corrective surgery as a result of their parents wanting that force through, not all even knowing that they had this, until it comes to a time when they want to again have fertility issues and have children, and then at that time having flashbacks and having trauma that they're having to experience, remembering that even here, in this city, being placed on tables and having people, medical students coming in and looking at them, being photographed right up to the age of 15 and 16, looking at the genitalia and asking to open the legs and all sorts of things, who are now as adult women in the main, who have reached out to their faith communities and other people within our backgrounds in terms of mental health services, asking for assistance and having flashbacks, and at that point in some of the religious communities, being forced through conversion practices and told that they have the demon of ancestral curse on them, which has caused them increased trauma. So I would ask you to look at the personal issues here and the trauma that we've been dealing with in this city and which others have been dealing with across the board as well. You know, we're not talking in terms of children, and I'd like to make that very clear, when we're talking here with this position statement, we're talking adults here, and that we are open to dealing with, and I'm very much welcome what you said, Nicky, in relation to your position.
Thank you, can we?
We would like to say that we are open to talk to people and we're very much welcome your position.
Can we, thank you, I'm sure we're talking across the chip. So thanks ever so much, Chrissie, for that insight, thank you. Have we got any questions, comments? Paul, Joe, did you hear, yeah, Paul, Joe and Angela?
When I was Cabinet Member for this area, I was appalled by the practices of two Sheffield churches. The two guys in question were segregated from the other church members, one had his work terminated by the church. I support the work done by Chrissie and her team and would endorse this report.
Thank you, Paul, Joe.
Thank you, yes, no, I'm glad for the report and I welcome the proposal, I agree, I agree we need a position statement like this. I'm just, in terms of the question that was asked, and I think you've largely addressed this actually, it did seem to me that questions about the Tavistock Clinic and the CAS report are, what they're asking is, you know, was what was happening in that clinic, was it actually, was there too much affirmation, I suppose, is what you're asking, which, and if that was the case, if that, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to comment, I can't comment on that, I'm not a clinician, I don't know whether the treatment was right there or not, but if it is the case that there was too much affirmation, that you were pushing people one way, then that is itself a kind of conversion therapy, isn't it? Now, that's not an argument to be, to support conversion therapy in the other direction, is it? It's not, it just isn't. What we have here is a statement against conversion therapy, it's against, you know, and we should support it, and I would be against conversion therapy in either direction, but what we have in front of us, as we've heard, is a huge problem of conversion therapy that is hostile to people who are trans or who are gay, and we absolutely have to support it.
Thank you, Joe, Angela?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say a huge thank you to the officers for working on this for months, this started well before I was Co-Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, and thank you for taking other people on board in terms of consultation. I think it's important for the city to have a statement against conversion therapy on the backdrop of a lot of media that demonises people who are part of the LGBTI plus community, on the backdrop of a rise in homophobia by 41%, homophobic crime is up 41% and transphobia 56%. So it's, we are a city of sanctuary, we're a city of sanctuary for everybody, so our message with this statement, that very rightly is not a policy, is making that message clear that people, people, human rights are equal, whatever group we belong to. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela, is there any more questions, comments? If not, we've got the recommendations in front of us, can we approve those recommendations? Agreed? Anybody against? Thank you, thank you, thank everybody, thank you. We now, have somehow tried to get back on the agenda, if at all possible. Next item is item seven, the retirement of staff, six members of staff with over 20 years' service, can we pay our respects and put them on the roll of honour? Thank you, thanks, everybody. Item eight, the work programme, is there any questions or comments about the work programme in front of us? Sorry, Douglas?
So there's a reference to the heritage strategy from full council, so I just want to say, if we're putting out the work plan, it actually needs to be on the work plan table, it's missing from there at the moment, so even if there are no dates fixed for it, if we could put that in there so we don't lose sight of it again, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, we've got that in hand, Douglas, if you have a look, there's section two, which gives you the detail of the minute, it just needs adding to the table, we'll do that.
Yeah, you, that's the thing he's doing, thanks.
Thank you and thanks, thanks everyone for that. Can we agree to work programme then? Thank you, anybody against? Right, thank you. Right, item nine, the response to the peer review, is that Chief Exec?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Obviously, we've had a little bit of a discussion about this earlier, but I just wanted to provide a bit of an introduction to this paper, so as has been mentioned earlier, this is the first time Sheffield City Council has participated in the LGA's corporate peer challenge process. This is a local government sector-led approach, where a team of members and officers from different local authorities around the country and indeed external organisations come to Sheffield and came to Sheffield earlier in the year for a week, spoke to partners, spoke to many members, spoke to many officers, and have, I guess, held a mirror up to us as an organisation. I want to start by paying tribute to all the staff who participated in that work and to make the point that the report makes really clearly, which is, the peer team were genuinely blown away by the affinity to and passion for our city that our staff and our people have, and I think that's a really important foundational point for us as a council as we move forward. It also identified a number of high-performing services across the council, which we should be really, really proud of. The peer review recognises that we are on a journey and is supportive of the direction of travel and the foundations that have started to be put in place. Some of the points that were made that are worth repeating was that challenge from the peer review team for the council to really hold and hold the spaces, a leader within the city, to work as part of Team Sheffield, and by Team Sheffield is very explicit that it means our communities, our voluntary community and faith sector, broader public sector partners and constitutions and private sector from small businesses to larger investors. One of the phrases in there is about awakening the sleeping giant and recognising that this is a fantastic city that we all love and that the council has a really important and exciting role in that future. There was feedback in there, there's really constructive and helpful feedback reflecting on the progress so far in implementing the governance changes in the council, recognising that the six-month review of the committee system was underway, and providing some important prompts. There was a important feedback around the work on the local area committees, welcoming and commending the work on local, with local communities, but also flagging the opportunity to strengthen that local approach, and strong recognition for the robust and prudent financial management that has been demonstrated by the council in very tough times, and was commended indeed by the full council when the budget was taken through just recently. And it does make it clear that there is a need for concerted change, and as you'll see in the paper, we make the point that this report needs to be seen absolutely alongside the Sir Martin O'Coaks reporting to the Street inquiry, as well as the Race Equality Commission report from last year, as a set of important external documents that give us challenge and also, I hope, a sense of real purpose and focus for the change that needs to come. The report recognises that we need bold organisational development and transformational plans to enable the council to be the council it needs to be for the future and one that we can all be really proud of. You'll see in the report that we set out what I would describe as a very high-level initial response to the peer review report, in that we set out our recommendation that the council should accept all of the recommendations in the peer challenge report, and we also identify clear timelines and accountability for taking forward every single one of those recommendations in an open and transparent way, making sure that we are feeding those recommendations into our work on the corporate plan, on our contributions to work across the city, on the city goals, and our work around implementing the Race Equality Commission, to name a few things. So with that, I would just flag the recommendations of the report, so we're asking members of Strategy and Resources Committee to note and welcome the corporate peer challenge report and its recommendations, to thank the corporate peer challenge team, which was led by Deborah Cadman from Birmingham City Council, and Aimee O'Brien from Merbury, as lead leader peer, to agree the council's response and this high-level action plan and delegate authority to myself and the strategic leaders. and delegate authority to myself and the strategic leadership team in consultation with members to take the steps required for implementation. To note that the peer team will undertake a follow-up visit to Sheffield, which we expect to be late summer, early autumn, August, September time. And that will be an opportunity to have reflection and provide a stocktake on the initial work done towards the recommendations. So that pace is important. And also to suggest that we return to Strategy and Resources Committee with progress towards the action plan no later than 12 months from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Any comments, questions, Joe?
Thank you for that. Thank you, Kate, for the report. And yeah, I'm not just going to oppose this. I, I agree, I agree with the process and the, the recommendations. I just wanted to, I just wanted to emphasise, and I, I, I'm slightly concerned this might get a little bit lost. The, the report did warn against the danger of insularity. And the city goals process that we have is, is, it feels to me it's very much, you know, about talking to partners and talking to communities and saying, well, what, what nice things do you want? And what that misses is a sense of Sheffield's place in the world and what we're going to offer the rest of the world. And given, and, and, and what makes us, what makes us different to the rest of the world. And I do think we have, we have some, you know, excellent things to offer. We've got great universities, great music scene, we've got obviously the history of country and all that we know, we all know about. But we need, we need, we need to have a sense of ourselves in the world in order to, in order, in order to, to leverage some of the economic opportunities that, that might, might come along with that. And to, to have a comprehensive set of, of city goals. So I just hope, I just hope that that doesn't get lost and that is, that, that, that warning is, is taken. And the city goals process isn't just asking people what they want in their community.
Cheers, Joe. I'll take Martin and hope they can work it out.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. I, I, like Joe, I endorse the recommendations and wholeheartedly. Just as somebody that used to manage capital programmes, I just want to raise a concern around one of the specific recommendations around monitoring risk on an ongoing basis. So we've got some huge capital projects going. I'm, I'm not talking about 25,000 quid here, I'm talking about, you know, 450 million per heart of the city and so on. As members, we don't see the, an ongoing risk analysis. And we only tend to see it when, and there's one example later on in the capital approvals, of when something has not gone according to plan and it's too late and you've got to spend two or three million quid on it, or you've got to change the scope. I'm just concerned that it may be happening, but we, as a committee, we've got no visibility of how those risks are being managed and what the potential exposure to the council is. So it's, it's just a polite request that, not on every project, but the big strategic ones that could cost us a lot of money, we need to have a bit more visibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. There's no more. Kate?
Thank you, Chair. So yes, to councillor Otten's point, I, I couldn't agree more. I think that it's very important through the city goals process that we ask a number of different sorts of questions. The questions that we ask are important around what people love about our city and what they want to see. But the peer review, the peer challenge is also clear that we need to be thinking expansively. We need to be seeing ourselves as a city in the world rather than the centre of the world. I think was one of the quotes we were given. And I believe there's going to be an item on the agenda for the April meeting of Strategy and Resources Committee around the city goals. And I think we'll make sure we, we reflect that comment in that, in that paper and presentation, but also allow some space for debate. To councillor Smith's point, again, I think it's, it's a good point. It's absolutely clear in there. In the very high-level action plan, we make the point that we are looking at how we develop a much tighter programme of business case reappraisal across the capital programme. My colleague Kate Martin over there, who I can't see through the screen away, is, is leading that work. And we'll make sure we bring that back. Well, the proposal is to bring that to Finance up Committee, but I'm happy to ensure that all interested councillors on Strategy and Resources are involved in the production of that process. It's, it's very important that we get that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. If there's no more questions, comments, can we agree to recommendations? Anybody against? Thank you. Thanks for that. Thanks, Kate, for that. Next, item, item 10, our favourite officers, is the transport review.
They are our favourites?
They are. Thank you, guys. Can you, can you introduce yourselves and then present the report? Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. My name's Will Stewart. I'm Director of Investment, Climate Change and Planning.
Thanks, Chair. Matthew Reynolds, Transport Planning and Infrastructure Manager.
Good afternoon. Tom Finnigan-Smith, I'm the Head of Strategic Transport Sustainability and Infrastructure.
If I can, Chair, I'll just introduce the item and then I'll hand over to colleagues. So just by way of introduction, this is an item that's been requested to be brought to Strategy and Resources. Because I think members across party felt it was the right time for us to be conducting a review into our transport projects in the city, just so that we can understand where we're up to with them, how they all knit together, and whether they're still appropriate for the future direction of the city. So this request came at the back end of last year. And since then, we've been having discussions around the organisation with various people and pulling together information. Basically, what we want to do is make sure that people understand where we are as a city. Our transport strategy was created in 2018, adopted in 2019. So it's, it's four years old now. So we need an opportunity to, to reflect and understand whether we're still fit for purpose and make sure that people who perhaps didn't have the oversight of the transport policies at that time have an opportunity to, to review those and understand those, particularly how they all mesh together as a city. There's an opportunity also for us to reflect on some of the lessons learned. So we are out there in the city implementing transport policy. Some of it's more controversial than others, I think it's fair to say. And it's important that we learn the lessons around consultation with our communities, around implementation, around how we do things as an authority, and, and we get better at implementing really important transport policy. Just, just a final thing before I hand over to officers. It's really important, I think, that, you know, we have a transport strategy because a well-functioning transport strategy has to play a number of different important roles for the city. Key amongst those is addressing Sheffield's environmental challenges. We all know that we need to move towards more sustainable modes, we need to incentivise modal shift. But that's sometimes quite hard for people to understand and it involves changes in people's lives. So we need to be really clear about what we're doing. We need to improve local neighbourhoods by reducing car dominance. We know, because we see it in our postbags, that lots and lots of the information that we're getting through from local area committees and from constituents in all of your wards are about inconsiderate driving, inconsiderate parking, congestion. So we need to reflect what people want and the information that's coming through from local area committees. We've just finished consultation on a local plan and that local plan is setting the direction, future direction for the city. And in that local plan, we are saying we need to deliver about 35,000 new homes. So having an up-to-date transport strategy will help us to deliver on our growth ambition. So it's really important that we recognise where the city needs to go and its ambitions in local plan. Transport strategy is a way of addressing some of the inequalities in the city. We know that about 30% of people in the city don't have access to a private car and that increases to about 45, 50% in some wards. So we need policies that will further our, you know, efforts to address inequality and make sure that we're providing transport options for all. As we recover from the pandemic, it's important that we accelerate and provide support to efforts to address economic growth and recovery from the pandemic. Transport will play a critical role in this. And also move to more active means in terms of our transport strategy will assist in some of those health and wellbeing outcomes that we're all passionate about delivering. And then I think the final thing I'll say is, as we look to our peers across the city, across other cities, other core cities in the country, we see cities like Sheffield taking bold and innovative steps to try and introduce, you know, new and innovative measures around transport strategy. So it's really up to us as a core city to be leading the way in some of the ideas that we are bringing forward. So with that, I'll hand over to, to Tom, who's going to take you through the next part of this presentation. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Chair. Just in terms of those key issues, I'll try and move through these slides fairly quickly because of the time. But obviously, in terms of the, the way in which we set our position locally, we have to be cognisant of that national agenda. So this slide just sets out, in terms of the Department for Transport, clearly at national level, they set the agenda in terms of a number of the, the national strategies that are really important and drive the policy framework that we were working. And importantly, they set the funding for which we then draw down, either working with partners at the region or ourselves with individual bids to, to ensure we're able to deliver on our local ambitions. That's not to say that we don't work closely with Transport for the North, who set us, who are a statutory transport body and set out key influence on agendas like Northern Powerhouse Rail. And our local partners are within the region. So we, we have to, to work and influence our partners within that transport strategy and within some of the, the kind of key public transport agendas that, that work at that level. But really important that in 2019, we adopted our strategy and to set out that local context of what was important to the city, not just at a policy level, but at the project level and how we move that forward to, to the benefit of the city. Aligned to all of those emerging agendas and priorities, as Will's mentioned. And in terms of working with partners, core cities are moving forward and leading that transformation, as Will's mentioned. A lot of places taking forward really bold investment and delivery. And we're, we're up there in terms of the, the proposals that are, are, are being set out. And we, you know, a number of our partners are delivering clean air zones, either just in advance of us or following on. And investment in, in public transport networks, bus priority, their metros or light rails. And that's exactly where we need to be. The, the strategy that was adopted in 2019 clearly was developed over the back end of 2017 and 2018. It sets out at a local level, the, a city that needs to be easier to get around. So really important to that is our improving and integrating mass transit, better and faster bus services. We absolutely have a role to play in that as our, as local highway authority, but we have to work with partners at South Yorkshire and our operators. The future of the super tram was in 2019 and remains a key priority for the city. And securing the future of the tram is, is essential and, and further work on that is underway. And, you know, making sure that our inner ring road, what, you know, was then a priority and remains a priority, particularly to ensure that, that congestion is managed and safe and efficient movement of, of public transport and active travel into and out of the city is maintained. Regional connectivity and national connectivity, absolutely essential. We know that there have been changes there, particularly with Northern Powerhouse Rail announcements and, and high speed too. And safety and a sustainable city has to be central and still remains a central part of our ambition. So our, our initial review of the strategy is that it still very much holds water within our current 2023 thinking, but there have been some significant movements. We know that there are issues and pressures. We know that bus services in the city have been affected recently. That post-pandemic picture is one of uncertainty still. And, and better bus services, if we're going to achieve some of our sustainability ambitions and managing the growth of the city, remain crucial. Cycling has risen on the agenda and continues to rise on the agenda, particularly given that the Department of Transport have set up Act to Travel England. They've set up national standards that we need to meet to deliver better and stronger infrastructure to encourage people to adopt that, that choice. We, we know that car will remain important, but I'll come on to some of the, the learning that we've, we've, we've been through in terms of our decarbonisation agenda, which will mean that, that we do need to take more action in that area. And a lot of the, the kind of, the, the postbank, as Will referred to earlier, is, is, is usually about some of the harm as a result of private car use within our communities. For the scale of change that we've seen and the reviews that we've undertaken on the strategy, we know that the learning from the Arab Pathway Report and our 10-point plan show that decarbonisation within the transport sector is going to be a crucial change. We weren't in this place in 2019 when the strategy was first adopted. And we know that mode shift away from private car towards active travel modes and public transport will be setting the agenda moving forward locally, but also nationally. Road safety, again, we do have a poor accident record within the city and there is much more that needs to be done in that space as well. And getting transport right and getting investment in our transport network right supports all of those things that Will was mentioning earlier. Those outcomes that we need to achieve as a city, that we're growing in in our economy, that we are kind of improving people's health, that we're tackling climate change. There are, there are schemes associated with the delivery of those outcomes that we have the funding for and we need to accelerate the delivery of. The table on the slide there just sets out the scale of our programme at the moment. And it is very, very significant, both in terms of funding secured, but also in terms of some of the pipeline and active schemes that we're working on to secure funding. If you look at that, you know, from a, just a local perspective, that top half of the table, there is about a quarter of a billion pounds that has been secured and further funding up to around 350 million that, that we are actively pursuing. So the, the scale of, of that agenda is significant. And again, regionally, a further 630 million pounds or so, say, quick, is required to deal with some of those regional ambitions, notably the tram renewal, a big part of that. All of the funding that we get is through competitive bidding, as I mentioned earlier. We have limited capacity within the, within the service, within the team. But the amount of success in terms of the, the, the funding that is coming into the city and that ambition is very strong. We do need to, to kind of make sure that there is revenue for ongoing policy work and for supporting the behavioural change and community engagement as part of our programme. Just to, to set out broadly on the back of the last slide, where across the city we are developing and delivering, you'll, you'll see there the different programmes in play. We are taking an approach of working out from the inside out for some of those active travel projects, looking at the propensity to change, making sure that we are evidence-led and prioritising our interventions. But nearly, nearly all parts of the city are included within our programme and there is still much more to do on the back of, on the back of that. So in terms of some of the kind of lessons and issues and how we move forward, I think we, we accepted that, given that the change, particularly around the decarbonisation agenda, behavioural change will be at the centre of, of, of our transport network transformation moving forward. People make day-to-day choices on how they move around at an individual level and it's really important that we work within that space. And stepping up our engagement and communication as part of that is certainly, is certainly going to be key. And learning from some of our experience around active neighbourhoods. We are reviewing and looking at toolkits for better engagement and communication. With close work and early stage with members and communities for that. We do think there is space for a strategy refresh to, to note and, and, and take cognisance of some of the changes since, since 2019, but that won't be whole, whole-scale change. We do need to get a real sharpness around some of our delivery plans though, to be really clear across the city where we need to invest next. That will require stronger and closer working with the, the MCA. Clearly, some of the issues we're facing around public transport are essential to that. And we, we will need to, to kind of set out our, our case really clearly. So just to conclude, as I say, we've reviewed the strategy. We think it's relevant, but delivery plans need to be sharper. That really does need to take cognisance of the climate declaration and our net zero ambitions. Project delivery is, is that we need to refine our messaging and communication and our experience in that is to, to set out a toolkit of clear engagement and activity in that space. And that we need a really strong political framework as a core city to secure decisions that are needed to maximise our investment and delivery. Our space within the region means that we do need to take a lead in providing clearer priorities to the region on our transport. on our transport improvements to influence and shape what South Yorkshire strategy and investment pipelines will be updated through this year. So the recommendations to SNR are that we note the update on the transport strategy and programme and the success in securing funding, significant funding into Sheffield and the progress made to deliver that ambition. And that TRC Policy Committee will be tasked with providing oversight to the refresh of the strategy, the development of delivery plans to make sure that the net zero ambitions are fully reflected, that officers are supported to review professional capacity required for our successful development and delivery and to review our approach to communications, consultation and engagement as a key part of achieving success moving forward.
Thanks, Tommy. I think it just shows what a cracking job your department and guys are doing. Kate, did you just want to kind of come in?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to say exactly that. Just a huge thank you in part for myself and all the senior team, to all of you. I think what's shown in that presentation is just how much impact a small team can have in bringing much-needed investment into the city. It's not always the easiest area and the resilience and commitment you show to our city is fantastic. And I particularly want to pay tribute to Matt, who I think this is probably the last time he'll be in front of this or any other committee. He's been an absolute legend and we are lost, I'm afraid, is Rotherham's game, but thank you so much for everything you've done for Sheffield.
Thank you, Kate, for saying that publicly. Right, Julie, any more? And Jo, Sheffield, Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm going to start with a big thank you to Matt. You have been inspirational to work with. It has been a real pleasure. And I cannot thank you enough for the work and dedication that you have shown to myself, to the team over the years. I don't want to give accolades to anybody else because I want the rest of the team to stay. Because they are doing a fantastic job too. And I think it's really important that we understand the amount of work that you do get through as a very small team is phenomenal. And I would publicly just like to make sure that thanks are passed on to everyone in the transport team because you do do a phenomenal amount of work for the size of the team and the challenges that you are facing. I think this review has come at a really good time for the council in terms of we can make sure we're fitting it in with the local plan so that we've got the transport joined up with the local plan. We're making sure that it's working in with the city goals that we're developing. I think it's really important that we do all of that so that as a council, we can start to show people how we are connecting things up, how things are working across the city and that we actually have a very ambitious plan for everyone across the city, be it in housing or parks or regeneration, transport, whatever it may be, that we are pulling everything together so we can show the people of Sheffield the benefit of all the hard work that's going in. That doesn't mean it's without its challenges. You know, we have to bid for funding. Sometimes it's successful, sometimes we're not. Even when we're successful, some of the timelines that are put on work are very, very challenging. And I think, you know, you can be really proud that the team can step up and can deliver to those timescales and challenges because that is extremely difficult for all of us to do. But I think there's also lots of work that we do need to do, which is acknowledged in the recommendations around communications, around education, about, you know, showing to the city that these are not, you know, ideas that we've just pulled out of thin air. These are ideas and plans that are there for everyone to make sure that our quality of life is better, to make sure that our mental health is better, to make sure that we can live the best lives that we can in our city. So there is an awful lot of work that's gone into this. I do hope that the committee this afternoon can agree with that and that we can get on with doing this piece of work as part of the overall strategy for our city. But thank you all and don't go, Matt.
Thank you, Julie. And if you get praise from my deputy leader, take it from personal experience. So I've got Jo and I've got Shafik and then at the end Marty, Richard, and then I'll bring you in, okay? Jo?
Thanks, sorry. I'm really sorry to ruin the tone here. Please don't take it personally, but I do have some problems to raise with this. So we live in a world where the 15-minute cities planning concept appears in newspapers as a plot to keep us all locked in our homes, don't we? We have a number of active travel and public transport related schemes that have happened or that are coming that are highly controversial in this city. Some of which, you know, some of which we support, some of which we oppose. But in each case, you know, we have to work with the community, we have to go through consultation, we have to design them right, and that is a huge challenge. And, yeah, I recognise that you're being asked to do impossible things quite often. To keep the city moving, to make it a city that works, that people can get around and get to work and get to all the things they need to go to while meeting net zero, feels like an impossible challenge. And, you know, it's not a criticism of officers that I don't think we're heading for it. I don't think we're getting there by 2030 by any means. But, so when I see in the scale of the change slide on this, the plan is to reduce the mode share of cars from 60 to 20% of journeys and a small increase in public transport. And the implication therefore is, well, you're going to have to walk or cycle if you can cycle everywhere you want to go or two thirds of the places you want to go. I can understand where those headlines are coming from. I can understand that people might think there's a great big plot to keep us all stuck in our homes because you're not going to be able to get anywhere. Saying you can just walk isn't a solution, isn't a transport option, isn't a transport strategy, it's an anti-transport strategy. If you can walk, yes, we talk about making it easy to walk and we should. And we talk about 15-minute city and we should do that. But the 15-minute city is a generational transformation of the city. It's not something you can do by 2030. It's a planning policy that is going to exist for the next however many years, which is going to start us down that road. So if you look at how much sort of pushback there's been over what has been very modest policies in terms of LTNs and cycle routes and changes to bus corridors. In terms of the pushback from that, when that's going to have a tiny impact on the amount of car use, then how you get from 60 to 20%, that is an impossible, that is an impossible. As to do that, you would have to, in my view, you'd have to do something like put mobile filters on the main roads, on Ecclesall Road and Abidale Road and Peniston Road and the Parkway. You put mobile filters on those roads so you can't drive a car in. Then, yes, okay, maybe you'll get to 20% mobile share for cars. But is that going to be politically deliverable for any elected members? Never mind, let's not make a party political issue, but is that going to be deliverable? Would anybody get re-elected if they did that? I don't think anybody would. So I fear that what we have here is a strategy, but it's got an impossible ask in it on mode shift for cars. And it doesn't need to be that drastic. I do think we could lean more heavily on EVs and we could target a level of car use that is similar to what we have. And that would thereby meet our air quality and climate targets, assuming that the electricity can be generated in zero carbon ways, which is something we have to rely on other powers to bring about. So that share is, I think that switch is A, impossible and B, unnecessary. And it's going to cause, and politically impossible as well as practically impossible. So it doesn't make for a good strategy. And then the public transport share, 25 up to 30%, well, that's not enough. And I'm sure nobody's going to come back and say, no, 30% is plenty. I'm sure we all agree that it's not enough. So I'm slightly baffled why in a strategy document, we're not saying, look, we're going to try and get a much better transport network. We have the opportunity with bus franchising to improve the buses. You know, the buses for a lot of people are not a practical option because they're not reliable enough. If you need to get to work on time, if you need to get to a committee meeting on time, you know, you're more likely to take the car. Even buses, I don't think will get us anywhere close to, even a good bus network wouldn't get us very close to the kind of model shifting cars we want. We would need trams. A lot of people would take a tram, we wouldn't take a bus. And so the fact we haven't got the money to expand the tram network shouldn't detract us, shouldn't discourage us from putting it in a strategy and saying, look, if you want us to get to net zero, this is what we're going to need. We're going to need a much bigger tram network. So I'm not happy with this strategy as it is. I appreciate we're not noting it. It's not up to us to agree with it. I have a proposal that, and I'll circulate it in a moment, that we ask officers to go away and look again at those modal shift targets to say, can we have more EVs and can we have more public transport? And can we have better involvement in consulting businesses and meeting the needs of businesses for the transport that they rely on for those businesses to succeed, to be able to happen? And I would like us to go away and reconsider the targets and reconsider the strategy in light of those observations. And so that's a proposal for this committee and I'll circulate it now. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I don't want to curtail the debate. We are at two hours 21 and we can extend for half an hour. Can we extend for, I'll bring you back, Julie. Shall we, can we expend for half an hour? Is that okay? Great, right, thanks. I thought you would, you said Shafik, you're the speaker, so. So I've got Shafik, Marty, Richard, Douglas. Is anybody else on Julie? Anybody else who wants to speak on this? That's all. And then I'll bring officers back. So thanks for that. Shafik?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, it's really useful to have this. So thank you for bringing this report. I share Joe's concerns around the modal shift in particular. As an elected member in the South West, I really want to see want to see a slightly more ambitious strategy around trams, particularly Dornetolly Station and Alhousers. If we are to deal with that commuter traffic that's causing us all trouble on Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road, then we've got to have much more reliable and much more, I would say, people buying into the tram system because they know, one, it's clean, it's tidy, it's going to turn up on time and it's going to get you to where you want to get to by and large on time. We did have some TV problems with tram train trials. We've got some lessons there to be learnt in Rotherham, in particular with the bridges. And I'm sure we learn them in Sheffield. And I think that I support Joe in trying to get that onto at least a strategy document. So when we take it to where we need to take it to, to say, this is our plan. Not only of where we think we're going to get some money from, but in future, where do you want to spend some money? Because you never know, governments sometimes end up, you know, at certain times of electoral cycle wanting to give extra money to people and cities will be more to be in that position. And finally, I just want to say, best of luck. Dr Adam Carter's awaiting you in Brinsworth for his shopping centre plan. But I just want to personally thank you and I'm sure if Barbara Masters was here, she would want to thank you for your perseverance with us in terms of Abbey Lane. And, you know, once that scheme comes into being, it'd be a legacy that you should be very proud of having helped us deliver. And that how can we do attitude will be dearly missed in this council. So good luck, Matt. And by the way, I only live down the road, so good luck with your future career. But don't take anyone else with you, all right?
Thank you, Shafik. Marty?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. The one thing that really jumped out at me is right at the bottom of that slide that says scale of change, where it says Sheffield's got the worst road safety record of all its core cities and the worst record than nearly all of the other metropolitan areas. I've been a councillor for nine years. I never knew that. And I'm sat here thinking, well, have I been in the wrong meetings for nine years? Or have we got enough priority on road safety? And either I'm extremely unlucky and not been in the right meetings or I'm sitting here thinking, do we need to prioritise that more? And I'd welcome, not now because we haven't got the data in front of us, but I don't know about anybody else. I'd welcome at the appropriate committee or even this committee to see those statistics for road safety and what we as a council can do about it.
Cheers, Marty. And I think TRC will bring Julie in at the end to kind of pick some of these up with officers. So as Chair, I committed, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question and a couple of comments. The £400 million earmarked for the tram refurbishment, I'm assuming that won't lay in another metre of tram tax, will it? That's purely just to bring it up to speed. So I didn't realise trams were so expensive to maintain. But the comment really, and I'll be brief because it's Joe and all his colleagues have said it. I just think the leap from out of cars to active travel that you're looking for, to me is unrealistic. I don't know if £6 million to promote that is enough. That's what you put in the budget. It's all about public transport to me. It's about getting a system that runs, which frees up. I mean, you said something last week that if we don't do something soon, Sheffield is just going to grind to a halt. And that's the point. I mean, it's one thing to reduce pollution by reducing car usage, but it's also making sure that car usage works, particularly for businesses. My concern in active travel is, yes, there's tremendous amount of health benefits, et cetera. But as I said the other week, we're an aging population, geography is against us. I just think the focus is a little bit too much on active travel and it needs to be returned to looking at public transport and funding that.
Thanks, Richard. Douglas?
Yeah, thanks. So first of all, I was going to say, as always, thanks to Matt and congratulations that. You just want to say, I mean, when I was exec member last year, Matt was invaluable in just giving, for me, an understanding of what the hell's going on with, you know, this huge amount of stuff going off. So, yeah, Rotherham's game. Secondly, I've just noticed that in the Chancellor's Statement today, we've got £8.8 billion announced for, I think it's the next phase of the CRSTS capital schemes. So that's obviously really good news to see that longer-term continuity. So I just want to say that I hope as much of that £8.8 billion comes to Sheffield as possible and none to Rotherham. So just want to add that point. No, it can't be fair. We'll let Rotherham join up with Sheffield too, use it wisely. But no, I mean, it is important to look ahead because, you know, this is about continuity. So just keep us brief. And with just this amendment that Joe's handed around, I have to say, I'm not supporting this. So I completely see where you're coming from, Joe. There's no way we can do this. We can't just put on something here just to sort of wish for a completely uncosted approach to a fully developed consultation toolkit. It's exactly the sort of thing we need, you know, always need more resources into communication and engagement. But as you haven't identified any, it's just not responsible to ask us to vote on that today. We need to let the officers get on with the job they're doing in line with the, well, with everything that's planned. You know, it's like they have kind of thought about it, you know. Cheers.
Thanks, Douglas. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of points from me. This paper, it's actually quite disappointing that it's come because the last time I checked, we have Liberal Democrats come to the policy briefings, we have Liberal Democrats come to the policy committees and the Liberal Democrats have not raised any issues or concerns in relation to these documents. So I think it's a little bit unfair that at the point where we are now looking at it, that we are getting proposals when surely they would have been better at the time when the members were having the briefings so that they could have been looked at and discussed with the policy. And if there was any chance of developing them and looking at funding them, we could have done that and brought that in the final paper that we've got here. So that's a little bit disappointing. If memory serves me correctly, and Shafik, you will tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure you asked some public questions about road safety figures in a full council meeting earlier this year or last year, anyway, this municipal year, when there was a piece of work out about the number of child deaths. So there has been some information about those because it has been discussed in questions at full council. So that has been something that's been picked up. And of course, we do have the good news that Oliver Copard, as the South Yorkshire Mayor, is looking at franchising. So obviously it's good to know that we'll all be supporting that and making sure that that can be a great improvement for the buses in South Yorkshire. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Julie. Brian, and then I'll bring, there's quite a few there to unpick, but I'll bring Brian in and yourself.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks for the report. I think it is time that it's come through and looking at this. And, you know, we do need to look at things. Yeah, thanks. And thanks for the report. I, I think it is time that it's come through and, and looking at this and, you know, we do need to look at things. Uh, so I welcome the report. I will just be brief. I understand what you're trying to say, Joe, with the amendment. I understand what you're saying and, you know, yes, we do need to look at, uh, load share targets. There are some in there. It's a bit confusing, I think, in the report with the graph where it, where it looks because it's, it's just looking at percentages and not in relation to each other. It sort of needs contextualising, I think, a little bit in there. Because if you just look at that graph, it looks a huge 250% increase on active travel. But you're looking at against other things on there. But, and I think we do need to increase focus on the, on ULEV infrastructure. I, I, it's just a word of caution really about expanding the super tram without having a look at, at what things in there. Yes, we, we've got a fantastic system there that we need to expand and living on, out towards the south east on the tram route, it's great. But the costs of putting on the tram train extension into Rotherham, uh, you know, I, I think we've got to be realistic with the expectations and I wouldn't want us to be putting things out there. We've got to be ambitious, but I don't think we should be setting expectations that high out there because the costs, without additional government funding to support that, it's just not viable. And I think we've got to be careful about raising those expectations too high on there. I think it's laudable in what we're looking to do. We do need to increase the infrastructure of ULEVs, et cetera, and looking through, but I, I think it needs working up more rather than just sort of dropping on us now. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Brian. Uh, number of questions obviously to, to pick up, then we'll go to the amendment and then we'll go back to recommendations. So if we could kind of just speed up, I don't want to kill the conversation, but quickly, we've got a large number of other items as well.
Thanks, Chair. Can I just come in on a, on a point around the graph? Because there's a lot of conversation going around the graph. The graph's actually taken from Arup's ten point plan for decarbonisation that was, uh, adopted by this council showing what we would need to do to get to a net zero position by 2030. Just to be clear, that's not, that's not set down in what we're saying today. That's, that's what, you know, Arup suggested we needed to do in order to get to that position. We know that that's an incredibly challenging position, uh, and actually what we need to do is bring a, a variety of different transport interventions across the city. A number of things that have been discussed here today in order to get towards that target. But that, that, just, just to be clear about that, that's not set down in our transport strategy here today. That's, that's the Arup report that's been adopted by this council as ten point, uh, in the ten point plan. Just picking up on a couple of other things around road safety and also, um, the super tram. I think road safety, yes, is, is a real clear priority for us, certainly as officers, and I know for you as members as well. I can't say too much about, um, what we've got lined up because we're currently, uh, engaged in, in government around specific road safety issues. But there are, um, there are initiatives that we are preparing, ready to go as soon as we're allowed to on road safety around the city. It's a, it's, as I said earlier on, in terms of our postbag, it's a real, you know, it's top of the agenda. So what, what we will be doing as an officer group is preparing, uh, a, a proper strategy around road safety that we can bring, uh, to committees to make sure that we're addressing the quite damning actually, uh, road safety statistics for us as, as an organisation. Just quickly on tram and then I'll bring in other, uh, colleagues. We're working really, really closely with, uh, South Yorkshire MCA on tram vision. And I think it's really important that we hold the bar very, very high in this city around tram. A lot of municipal, uh, organisations and other core cities want a tram. We've already got one. I think we need to, we need to cherish it, we need to preserve it, we need to expand it ultimately. That will cost a huge amount of money, as we've said. But it's important, the first step in that is, is to set a really ambitious future for the tram. And we're working very, very closely with, um, Oliver Copard and John Dowey, who's the new exec director for Transport at MCA. And we'll be, we'll be doing some co-working with that team in the coming months. Uh, so just to reassure all members that we are, um, fully engaged at a regional level on what's necessary for tram. Sorry, I'll hand over to, um, to Tom and Matt.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Will. Um, I think that there was a point around the fifteen minute city, uh, kind of context. I, I think from some of the work that we've done, actually the, the kind of Sheffield, you know, much of Sheffield already operates, you know, within a fifteen to twenty minute kind of, um, city. So that's really about what shops, services, facilities are close to people within their communities. It, it isn't about kind of constraining movement. It's about providing those services and facilities close to where people are. Now clearly there's, there are parts of Sheffield where that isn't the case and that needs to be part of our kind of planning and consideration moving forward. Um, it's not just about kind of engineering those solutions, albeit, um, clearly a, a high level of, of the, the trips that are undertaken by car at the moment are over very short distances. So that behavioural change that I mentioned earlier is absolutely key. And, and part of that is, is kind of trying to kind of provide that education and kind of information about why people should change behaviours. As I said, it's about individuals at the end of the day, and that's why transport has remained quite static in terms of its carbon emissions as a city for a long period of time. And between the last two concept, uh, censuses, you know, car ownership has gone up in the city. So it is a really challenging issue, not just in terms of the scale of the change, but the way in which that change needs to be brought forward and embedded as a city. So I think that, that's just all I want to mention on fifteen minute cities. Uh, I think Will might have covered all of the other, other issues, um, that, that kind of in, in the round really.
Thanks, Tom.
Sorry, Chair, can I just say something really quickly?
You're okay.
I'll, I'll answer, sorry, first instance of this discussion is, as part of the, um, point two, which you proposed here, Joe, about the consultation toolkit, we're working that through right now. Um, and I think actually hopefully through some of the approach we've taken on the CRSTS programme. So they sit on Chesterfield Road, for example, we've done the walkthroughs with the members, we've pulled in all the issues which you have with casework to try and complement those big strategic projects with the little bits which the community are after. So we try to pick up some of those little bits and bobs. And, and that's been, that's been something we've been able to do since we've been, come out of lockdown and started to work more face to face. So that's one which I'm trying to embed within the team as we go forward. Um, the other big piece, and, and, sorry, Chair, we've spoken about this a few times before, is we need to set the strategy with the mandate which people can understand why we're doing it. So when we're saying, telling people that we're doing this on a particular street, they can quickly read across and say, oh, right, yeah, because it makes sense. It relates to this and this is how it connects to that. And that's one of the, that's one of the bits which the strategy refresh will look to start to consider, is to pull all those strands together. So when reading across active travel, it feeds into the public transport system, which feeds into road safety statistic. And you can start to see that kind of thread across all of it. And then finally, just to say, I'm, I'm incredibly embarrassed right now. Um, I, I, I really, really appreciate those comments and and I'm glad I stuck around for a bit longer because I need to speak to the kids who were about half an hour ago. Um, uh, and, and, you know, it's been absolute pleasure. I'm from Sheffield. Uh, I, I've, I've got it in my veins and I've loved every single, uh, minute working here, e- even twelve o'clock at night finishing off reports, which Tom's made me do. Uh, it's been, it's been absolutely fantastic. And, and I am truly, uh, s- sorry to leave. Um, but I'm hoping we're in a, we're in a really good position. Um, and thanks, but thanks to all of you for, for all your help throughout the years. So thanks.
Thanks, thank you. You can change your mind at any time. That's all I'm going to say. Um, so we've got an amendment in, in front of us, uh, right now. Joe obviously put the amendment due. Have we got a second for the amendment? Okay. Uh, so basically then, all those in favour of the amendment, please show. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Thanks for that.
Can I have my vote recorded, please?
You certainly can. Craig's on with that.
And I think my colleagues might also want their votes recorded if they're nodding.
We'll take that, we'll take that as read. Uh, the recommendations, uh, as per the report, can we agree those? Agreed and against? No. Thank you very much. Can I ask for your forbearance to just go, uh, with the change of the agenda item? I've had a request that we bring up the King's Coronation and Eurovision Song Contest, probably because that will be on before we get to the end of this meeting. But if we can, Gary, uh, can we, Wendy, Diana, can we, uh, present that, please? Uh, thanks, everybody. And, uh, again, thank you, Matt. Over to you, Gary. And Diana, can you, can you introduce this elderly troupe?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm Gary Clifton, Service Manager, Major Events Team.
And I'm Diana Buckley. I'm the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture.
Thank you for bumping this up the agenda. Um, hopefully people have seen the report at the previous two S and R pre-meetings. Um, this is the city's approach to celebrating, uh, two pretty unique but very different, uh, event opportunities coming to the city. King's Coronation, uh, on the sixth of May, uh, and the King's Concert on the seventh of May, uh, and the Eurovision Song Contest. Um, we've been approached by, uh, the BBC and, and we looked at ourselves to do two celebration events uh, for those two national and very different, uh, event opportunities to the city. Um, I'll, I can get into the details of the report if people wish, but it's basically, you know, two free to attend events, cost of living crisis, people coming out to enjoy two very different events. Uh, some people will be, uh, very switched into the King's Coronation. Some people will be very switched into the Eurovision Song Contest. Um, both are very much reaching out into the communities. So the King's Coronation, uh, will be working with our local area committees, um, as we did for the Queen's, um, Jubilee last year. Um, so the, the King's Coronation will be in short, a, a, a screening of, of the coronation in the peace gardens with all things coronation, street entertainment, street party type atmosphere in the peace gardens. Uh, local area committees will be allowed to, um, distribute funds to their local committees via, via their wards uh, for people to have a street party, get a street entertainer to, to, to some of their parties, a bouncy castle, any number of things. I think last year we, we did something over 200 different pots of funds were spread across the city and it was very well received and really enjoyable, um, to be fair. We've already had thirteen street party requests. Uh, for the Queen's, uh, Jubilee last year, we had about 120. So that presents a few headaches, but it's all good. Um, we're also doing something a little bit different, um, in, in memory of the Queen. Um, and we've had approval from the Lord Lieutenant's Office that we can do this. Um, so within the Winter Garden, over the same weekend, uh, we've literally having the books of condolences collected from across the city, um, at the passing of the Queen last year, bound into two leather bound books. Um, and a number of the more elaborate, um, exquisite flower displays that were placed in the peace gardens, uh, turned into dried flower permanent displays in, in, into, um, frames. Uh, we've got all the teddies and the cards that, that were left in the various locations. Um, and we're also going to plant a tree, uh, or shrub, I'm, I'm no gardener, apologies, um, in the winter garden behind the Queen's Stone. Uh, but again, a, a nice touch, we, we collected all the flowers that, that were left uh, in the peace gardens last year. They've been turned to mulch over the winter months. So we're going to use that to plant the tree. Um, so we're going to use that as a, as a bit of a, people just come and reflect and have a look at the books of condolences over the weekend as well. Uh, Eurovision Song Contest is the polar opposite of that. Um, it's all things party, it's all thing Eurovision, uh, it's all things enjoyment, but, but very much with a a nod to our Ukrainian colleagues and friends that, that we gave a commitment to, um, in our Eurovision Song Contest bid last year. Uh, we said that if we were unsuccessful, we would still commit to doing something. Uh, unfortunately, the BBC have allowed us to do that. Uh, we're working very strongly with our, our friends in, in Khemeni Ski. Um, they're bringing some fantastic acts over. Um, we're working with Tanya and Alina in the Association of Ukrainians in Great Britain, uh, that we know very well. Um, and they're bringing some, some acts, um, some, some street entertainment, um, some craft work, um, to Eurovision Song Contest as well. Uh, but we're also reaching out into the communities, um, around workshops, dance workshops, rap, spoken word, poetry, all, all sorts of weird and wonderful, fantastic things that are really going to reach out into our communities. So they can all share a little bit of, of, of the, of the Eurovision, um, feel, um, touch. So the, the day will kind of be five hours of stage workshop entertainment up on Devonshire Green with the live show on, on a screen, um, in, in the evening. Um, it's different, it's new for us, um, but we've got some great partners involved. The BBC have been exceptionally supportive. Um, we think we've got a surprise to come along the way, but we can't say too much about it now because we've been asked to sign an NDA. Um, but that's the reporting show. The recommendation is that, that we do this. Uh, we have bid for additional funding support to mitigate our costs, uh, which we've literally found out today to have, have been successful, which is very positive. Um, so the original 295k request has gone down by about £50,000 this afternoon. Um, so I know we, we'll try our best.
We've got about £100,000 worth of bids in with the Arts Council through Shared Prosperity Fund and with the BBC. So we're hopeful that we'll get a big chunk to support this event.
Thank, thank you, uh, everybody. Um, I'm just conscious we've fifteen minutes left and we've got quite a bit on the agenda. So, Angela?
Just a very quick comment. Um, I'm not going to say that I'm a Republican. Um, however, I've been in all the meetings leading up to this report coming here and I think, uh, in my ward, we've already had three requests for the coronation. I'm sure we'll get more. Um, I think, um, and, you know, hopefully we'll get some for the, uh, Eurovision as well. I think the important thing to say is also that it's going to bring people in the city centre and it's leading up to lots of other events that are happening over several weekends in the city centre. Um, so hopefully it can give people access to free things that they can do with their children on the weekend, uh, and have fun. And we've got something for, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't have two events more dif- different, you know, pompous circumstance and complete anarchy to consecutive, oh, you know, in terms of the acts.
That, that, thank, thank you. Um, is there any, um, we've got the recommendations. I usually spend Eurovision with councillor Paul Wood, but we, we might be in the peace garden, who knows? Uh, is there any, um, anybody against the recommendations? If not, thank you, thank you, Gary, thank you, Diana. Can we go straight on to then, at pace if we can, on to item 11, purchase of electricity from renewable sources? Who's presenting that? Thank you, Tom.
Afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm Tom Smith, Director of Direct Services. I'll be relatively brief. So, um, council's previously bought, bought, uh, renewable energy guarantee of origin certificates as part of our energy procurement process. Proposal that's in front of you is to cease doing that and use the money to support local climate activity. Um, Regos, as they're known, uh, are basically certificates that are claimed by people who generate electricity through sustainable means. They, those certificates then bought by other energy suppliers who sell them on to end users who want to prove that they are using electricity from renewable sources. Um, it, it, it doesn't really do that in practice. So you are still using the energy from all the places it's generated from, but it allows you, the, the system is effectively set up to try to subsidise renewable energy. There's a limited supply of those certificates. So as more organisations want to buy them, they get more expensive and that's precisely what is happening. So, uh, forecast by our supplier for 2324 indicate that the price is going to increase from what we spent previously about £40,000 a year to something between £200,000 and £300,000 a year for these renewable energy, uh, energy guarantee of origin certificates. Uh, we've got to allocate budget £40,000. So clearly we haven't actually got enough money if that is what the cost is. Uh, the subscription to the energy tariff backed by Regos doesn't contribute to our ten point plan. It doesn't have any effect on reducing the demand for energy within the city or contribute to the actual production of renewable energy within Sheffield. Um, we, you know, officers feel that investment in local sustainability projects to reduce demand for electricity for the national grid must be a higher priority than buying these certificates. Um, and the Arup report, uh, there's been, they've been referenced earlier in terms of our pathway to zero carbon, didn't recommend using procurement based approaches to reach net zero for our electricity. So, uh, and this decision won't impact therefore on our net zero targets, doesn't impact on what we're, we're reporting back in terms of our carbon usage. Um, conversely, investing the money that we currently spend on Regos would be a decision that aligns directly with the ten point plan. Uh, we intend to use the £40,000, uh, to build a comprehensive communications engagement package that will allow communities and organisations to learn about and access specific renewable energy funding and investment opportunities in Sheffield. And officers within Will's team who's run off, uh, will be working with local area committees, businesses and community organisations to allocate those resources as we go forward. We've talked to some of the core cities. We've got five responses back from core cities. Uh, only one of those five is, is buying Regos in 2324. The other, the other four are not. Um, of those four, I, I think, uh, two of them have, have actually taken a decision, uh, previously not to buy those. So, uh, we recommend that we, we go to the EDF standard product and don't pay a premium going forward.
Thanks, Tom. Douglas?
Um, thanks then. Um, so I can see where this is going. Still just a little bit disappointed we haven't got a more firm idea of what we're going to actually spend the money on that we're not going to spend on these Rego certificates. Um, I, I probably don't need to go into it now because of the time, but I wonder if we could get some insurance that we can have something circulated with a bit more detail to that proposal as soon as possible. I'm a little worried if we say we've been into a sort of general comms package that will just fritter away the, without it coming to something sensible. With £40,000 a year, then, you know, we could be having extra member staff in the sustainability team under Mark with actually doing ongoing substantial work and including going that messaging out. So I wonder, it'd be good if we could do that. Just on the, on the regos, I'm quite happy to ditch the regos in principle because they're industry standard greenwashing. What it does mean of course is we're not complying with the original motion passed by full council back in 2019, which is about putting investment into actual renewable energy. I think that's been cost up at the, more of the higher end, £287,000 a year. I mean, we should if possible look towards doing that if we're serious about the climate emergency, but realise that's something we have to park for another day. But yeah, if we could at some point get a bit more detail circulated about what's going to be done with this. And the final thing is, just want some assurance that the £40,000 is going to be an annual reinvestment in the sustainability team or something, rather than just a one-off because it is an annual recurring saving. So I don't want that resource just to disappear somewhere.
Thanks Douglas, Jill.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Douglas that, I'm not convinced that the proposal to what I'm going to spend money on is very good. I mean, I also agree that regos are not a concept that has actually delivered what was intended of them, so it's sensible to stop buying them. Surely it's a matter for TRC, isn't it? If we've got some climate-related money to spend, I'd be happy just to leave it to TRC and not bring it back to S and R, given the amount that it is. I don't think we need to consider it here any further.
I totally agree on that, Jill, I think TRC is the place. Just Kurt, Tom, can you just pick up the points about what Douglas was asking about, the reoccurring £40,000 as well, I think was Douglas's point.
Yeah, so the intention, it's allocated budget for our energy budget, so the intention is recurring, it will effectively be viated across into the climate to inform whatever is agreed for it to be used for on an ongoing basis.
Thanks, okay. With those recommendations and the TRC, crack on with this. Okay, thank you, thanks everybody. So jumping straight back is to one of our favourites, capital approvals. Damien, just to say in the time walk really.
Hi, I'm Damien Mockinson, I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team. I've bringing the monthly additions and variousness to capital approvals report. There are a number of items in there, so given time, I'll not go through everything. I'll just mention that the major items being the increased costs that have been seen on the Future High Streets Fund and the approval of that. The Transforming Cities Fund Housing Zone North Transport Scheme, which is a 14.5 million, well, a total 16 million scheme increase of 14.5 million, which relates a lot to the work that Tom and Matt were talking about earlier, so that's one of the key schemes in that. We've got the disabled facilities grant budgets for this coming year, which is around 6.2 million for under adult social care. And just really noting that the Future High Streets Fund approval is just subject to us waiting a final approval from Department for levelling up regarding the changes scope to that scheme. So that's why it's in a separate appendix and the recommendation is that we're just awaiting that decision, which we should get quite shortly.
Thank you. Damien, Marty?
Thank you Chair. Yes, it was about future high streets, as you can imagine. Two questions. One, the, it's in there in two sections. The costs have gone up quite dramatically even, I mean, we all know that costs are going up, so as an engineer, I get that completely, but that one appears to be unusually unlucky. So how come it's gone up so much? But the other one that really surprised me was the significant reduction in the front door intervention scheme. Because I remember when we, as a council, first put forward, you know, what are we going to do to revitalise Fargate? One of the most important things, if not the most important, was opening up access to the space above the retail units, because the only way to get in is through the front door. So why has that become significantly less important as part of the business case and why are we having to raid that part of funding to pop other stuff up? Thank you.
As far as I know, I mean, that would take to TRC for a decision on those changes around that. So that went in February, I think, to TRC, the changes to the overall programme, so the decision around that. And there was a briefing, I think, to finance subcommittee we did on the overall increase of costs. So my colleagues in Capital Delivery Service went before, we went before Christmas to finance subcommittee briefing session, just to explain, you know, the increasing costs there. But yeah, as far as I know, TRC have been briefed and taken decision on that, so I can try and find that report out.
Yeah, if you could please, because it is a major, major change from the original business case and I would have a concern, and I'm sure TRC have looked into it, that, you know, it's not just about, pardon my language, tarting Fargate up a bit. It's about revitalising that whole street and that was the major thing that was pushed as part of the Future High Streets project. But yeah, if you can get me the information, that'd be great.
Yeah, as far as I know, TRC took a report on that in February, so we'll find that.
Okay, just quickly, I know Brian wants to go in. We've got our final opportunity to extend for 30 minutes, just to get through the final. I don't propose at all taking the 30 minutes, but as quick as we can, but we'll be as quick as, are we okay with just extending? Okay, Brian if we can, and then we'll move to the...
Thanks, he's very brief Chair. I just hope that when we're looking at things like the, with the Future High Street and the work that's going on in there, don't we make sure we're putting in, and it's probably for the TRC committee to look at this, but we're putting in a three-phase electricity in there, if we're going to have events and we're going to have activities in there, you know, we're putting in things that we're trying to improve air quality throughout the city centre, let's put the infrastructure in there. And I know there's been an offer from the people who put on events in the city centre through the markets, the Christmas markets and etcetera and things like that, that they would interest in investigating, in putting some investment in there to bring it in because they know the costs that they incur and it would make far more sense that we have, if we're doing this, we do it once and get the infrastructure in there with the three-phase electricity. Thanks Chair.
Thanks Brian. We've got recommendations in front of us and obviously we're watching, receiving the report, can we agree those recommendations? Thank you, thanks everybody. We're on the final three now. Item 15, Local Authority Housing Fund, thank you for your forbearance. If we can, please introduce yourself and take it that we've read the report and just give us the highlights, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jonathan South, I'm the Service Manager for Supported Accommodation within housing.
Hello, I'm Janet Sharp, I'm the Director of Housing at Sheffield City Council.
So the Local Authority Housing Fund, I'll be as brief as I can. The government announced the extension of funding for the Homes for Ukraine scheme just before Christmas. One element of that was the provision of a £500 million fund to purchase and redevelopment homes for someone who was most affected by refugee arrivals within the city. Sheffield's allocation was £2.8 million. We've completed a validation exercise with De Look, they've approved our proposal to purchase and acquire new homes. The report highlights the funding use of £2.8 million of grant to purchase properties, which is approximately half the cost of the properties with capital being used to purchase the remainder of the amount of property value. The capital loan value will be repaid through rental receipts and the paper does highlight the positive nature of that in terms of the rental receipts being higher than the loan repayments. Sheffield has received 322 cases of refugees arriving from the homes in Ukraine, 215 of those cases are still living with sponsors within sponsor accommodation and the authority has also pledged to resettle 88 refugees in the next financial year, so the acquisition of these properties will support that resettlement. So the recommendation that the committee has to approve the acceptance and spend of the grant of £2.8 million, the use of capital within the stock increase programme and to approve the acquisition of up to 39 new homes within this proposal.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Hopefully the report is self-explanatory. So what the report talks about is the high-level strategy to change the way we support short-term supported housing services, which port farm of our support pathway for those individuals who are at risk of becoming homelessness. And as you know, this is a significant challenge for us in the city. So this, this report is based on a review that was agreed more than two years ago to review our commissioned services in terms of how we provide support for some of our most vulnerable in the city, how we prevent homelessness, but also how we make sure that individuals have the correct level of support they need to be able to live independently. And the reason for doing that is that it came at a time when the council was continually reducing obviously budgets for supported housing, but also whilst increasing numbers of individuals being referred for services that had more complex needs. And also to make sure that, you know, we have the right level of provision in the city to support people with different needs and also to make sure that we were commissioning the right level of services that will enable people to live independent, but also to provide the support when they need it and also to make sure that the council's achieving value for money for the services. This has been quite, quite an extensive piece of work and it's involved services right across the council, you know, from housing, from children's, from adult and social care services, but also not forgetting huge contribution from the service users of our service. And this has been very much in terms of co-production, to listen and hear for people who we are placing in hostels, who we are placing in supported housing accommodation, to make sure of how they want to receive services included and the areas that have worked successfully for them. And over 70% have been happy with the services that have been provided, but also for the 30%, the things that either set them back a little way or where we could have done some things differently. So a credit to the officers, this has been largely headed up by Susan Allen and Sam within our commissioned services, Sam Martin within commissioned services, but also the huge commitment across all services in the council to bring this review together, to really set out how we want to focus on prevention, to prevent homelessness, to prevent, you know, needing to intervene, you know, where people are in crisis and also those early warning signs to make sure we've got the right infrastructure in place in the city to be able to do that. So the report obviously goes through that we need a new model. You know, it's initially focused heavily on accommodation and support services, but also sets out that we now need to take all of that evidence base, all of that learning, all of that feedback to the next stage, which is to actually implement some of the changes and obviously bring back to this committee a clear business case of how we will implement the changes. So hopefully the report is self-explanatory. I think the scope of that review is set out in pages 301 to 303 in the report. You will see the findings of all that, that collaboration and evidence base is included in the report and also sets out at page 309, the summary of how the new model will be introduced and also how it will support some of our most vulnerable people in the city and particularly those living in extremely difficult circumstances and at great risk of homelessness. So it will be very much a prevention model, you know, we will put our effort into prevention rather than dealing with in crisis and also it will enable us to redesign the services. Now, this won't happen overnight, it will take two or three years to both embed the model and also to bring forward how we will do things differently. The council commishes many commissioned services, so it will take time to do that. And also hopefully the report is self-explanatory in terms of how we want the new model to work moving forward. No further, nothing further to add.
Thank you Janet. Comments, questions, Don?
Thank you Chair, just a quick comment Janet. We were recently in a meeting discussing the White Ribbon Campaign and working as a council and around working against violence against women and girls. I have casework currently and I think this should be taken into account as part of this policy, where I have a young woman fleeing domestic violence and needs to move, she's got social worker support. The council's policy of not being able to rehouse someone with rent arrears is keeping her in the situation that she's in because she's unable to move. The reason she's in rent arrears is because her domestic violence situation also includes coercive control and financial control. So I think we need to look at that as part of this policy, so that was just a comment, if we can look at that, thank you.
If I could just come back. So one of the things we wish to do for anyone vulnerable fleeing domestic violence is allow arrears to prevent them from moving. One of the things we probably do need to do is triage support and also look at, to make sure there is lots of hardship support and other arrangements in place that can support individuals who face themselves in significant arrears. That would be the approach. If anyone is struggling to be able to secure a move and that could be with an external provider or commissioned service, then my advice would be to contact Housing Solutions and what we will do is put some case management around that individual to see what we can do to make sure. But what we shouldn't be doing is ignoring someone fleeing domestic violence.
Thank you and thanks Don, thanks Janet. We've got the recommendations in front of us, can we agree those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you. So on to the final item, which is the update on marketing of the former Coles Brothers Building. Thank you for your patience Neil. Can you introduce yourself and present the highlights?
I'll keep it very short. So I'm Neil Jones, City Regeneration Division. So we were hoping that by this time, when the site, when we put the site on the market last year, we'd actually have a position where we had a preferred bidder by this stage due to the listing, various other issues, we're not able to do that. So we're in a, we're in a place where we're in quite a nice position in terms of having a problem to deal with, which is we've got six very firm bids, all from good sensible parties. We're still going through the interview process, we met all of them last week. We're now saying that we've got a revised closing date for bids of the 31st of March. We'll then do some further clarifications, do necessary briefings with members in the lead up to the election. We're not going to be, take a decision this side of the election and then bring a report to the first possible Strategy and Resources Committee after the election.
Thank you Neil. Any questions, comments? If not, can we approve the recommendations? Thank you. Thank you. Can I, can I just before you go, thank members and officers for today's meeting? Very challenging meeting, but I think it proves we have moved on, we're all doing a different style of politics and I just wanted to thank you for your conduct today. Thank you. See you on the 19th. Bye.